And everyone, I'm going to call the May 26th School Board Meeting to Order. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. This is for possible action.
So moved.
Sorry, second.
We have a motion by Laurel, a second by Joe. Any discussion by the board? Any public comment about the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Trustee Crossman, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I hand it over to Mr. Stokes for the superintendent's report, I'll say that it's very nice to see some other smiling faces in the room besides just the few of us who have been here the last several meetings. So I know that the small core of us are all happy to see some other humans in here. So, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker. I echo those comments. It is nice to have folks here in person. And as you have experienced personally, there are a number of changes and things that are just occurring on a daily basis with regard to school and a few things. So here are some familiar items that hopefully will bring a smile to your face. Carson High School has identified its valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of 2020. Mr. Kai Chin is Carson High School's valedictorian, and he will be attending Duke University. He has a full ride, four-year scholarship that's worth in excess of $320,000. Has a GPA of 5.65. He's taken 16 AP classes and two college-level math classes at WNC. Really a tremendous young man, and has accomplished much in his time at Carson High. He is joined by salutatorian Ava Covington, who is also a tremendous student. And she's an interesting young woman. She's an artist, musician, and a writer. And yet, at the university level, she hopes to study geophysics and astronomy. So really proud of both of these students. This year, we have a little different consideration. One of our students, who is a Carson High School student, Marin Meiler, has just completed her associate's degree in the Jump Start Program at Western Nevada College. And she is this year's Jump Start College valedictorian. And so we have identified now students in that valedictory position, not only at Carson High School and Pioneer High School, but also at the Jump Start Program. Marin will be attending BYU in Idaho, and her plans are to pursue a bachelor in music education. So after she's all done with her schooling, we invite her to come back here and go to work for us. Our Jump Start salutatorian is Sailor Mueller, and she has also, of course, graduated with an associate's degree from Western Nevada College, with a degree and hopes to earn a degree in network administration. So she's hoping to go on to the college of her choice from here forward, and we wish her well. Pioneer High School's valedictorian is Sidney Miller, and she is the top student at Pioneer High School. And coincidentally, she has also earned her associate's degree from WNC. So again, another high flyer, high achiever. And Pioneer High School's salutatorian, Lucia Shindel, and her situation is that she'll be the salutatorian at Pioneer High, and she is planning to go to UNR. And we wish her well in all of her efforts. So really proud of our students and grateful that they have met all the requirements and then, of course, in these cases exceeded them. Just to let you folks know, the prison ed graduations have been canceled. So those that were scheduled for mid-June have all been canceled now due to current conditions. The Department of Education has indicated that for next year, all student teaching is on hold. So I'm not quite sure how that will play out, especially as it applies to new students hoping to get jobs as teachers. And so we'll wait and watch and see how that plays out. We have also worked towards putting together a reopening committee, thanks to those of you who have indicated that you'd be willing to serve. And there's about 15 individuals there representing classified, certified, administrative. We have teachers who have also indicated that they'd be willing to participate. And so we know that there will be some uniqueness to our coming school year. Just exactly what that looks like, we're uncertain, but we are intending to look at a variety of scenarios and try to come up with plans for every conceivable application, so that we'll have plans and ideas as we move forward into the coming year. Last thing, just to mention, we had 13 students from Carson City School District that earned their associate's degree from Western Nevada College with the Jump Start Program, and we're proud of them. And we look forward to celebrating their high school graduation on the 6th of June. Thank you, Mr. President. That's my report.
Hey, Mr. Stokes, can I ask you a quick question? With the student teaching being placed on hold, would that include student teachers that are already placed in your school for the next school year?
I believe it does. I'll have to clarify that with Dr. Delphin, but I believe all student teaching assignments and opportunities have been postponed, at least I'll say that, until further notice. And they're, again, just trying to make sure that social distancing is done according to all the rules and regulations, and that there's an abundance of caution still being exercised at all levels.
Thank you. Trustees, any of you have a question for Mr. Stokes? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is board reports, and this is for information only. We'll start with trustee Greeney.
Nothing this week.
Thank you. Good to see you, Donald. Stacy?
Nothing. We did have a Pacific Region call this week, and the National School Board Association has canceled all the meetings throughout the whole year. So we're not sure if we're going to have a Pacific Region meeting in person in Washington in October either. So that's just a little update there. And no, Minneapolis is canceled. They're looking at probably trying to do it viral or virtual because of we didn't do anything with the bylaws and the policies. So we have an ad hoc committee starting in the middle of June to go over those, that we're supposed to do in April. And then we'll, after that, we'll start on the new ones for the next season. And the new executive director takes over June 1st. So that's my report.
Thank you. Richard?
Just a quick report. Bordwick Brave would like to remind everybody that parents can come by and retrieve their students' belongings tomorrow between 10:00 and 6:00. And the teachers over there, they're putting together a display, I guess, for a lot of posters that as the parents drive in, they'll see these different posters made by the teachers. They're hanging them up there on the driveway as they come into the property. That's my report.
That's nice. Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. No report. I just want to express my congratulations to our valedictorians, salutatorians for both Carson High and Pioneer. Kind of curious what the maximum GPA you could possibly achieve is, because that's almost double what I think I might have achieved at that time. No, it's fantastic. Good for them. I want to congratulate our AP students and our Jump Start students. Just a plug for kids considering Jump Start. My daughter was one of the Jump Start students who got her associate's degree in high school. She went to ASU, and in light of the whole COVID things, deciding to come back home and finish her education at UNR. And even with doing that and switching her major, she's able to finish in four years total. So it's a great savings for us. It's a great accomplishment for these kids. So, and I've said it before, whether it's AP, Jump Start, CTE, I think we have a place for everybody. And, you know, find your place and march down that road, and that's the right solution. So congratulations, everybody.
Yeah, Joe, I don't think any of us want to compare GPAs with the high flyers of today. Lupe, do you have a board report?
I was just reviewing my notes here. So for Empire, the students will have assigned dates during the week of June 1st to go and pick up their supplies. A phone message and video and face message will be sent soon with the dates and times. During these times, they will be selling yearbooks at the front school, and the staff will be helping with social distance. Thank you to the students who took time to participate in the Mrs. Squire Science, Math, and Reading Contest on YouTube. A lot of fun. They had a lot of fun, and they had many winners. Thank you to the teachers, parents, siblings, who put so much effort and hard work during the time of social distance learning. And they can wait to see them back in person in August. For Mark Twain, they're conducting their bag and tag student personal belongings and pickup packet drop-off. Band instrument and library books drop-off on Friday, May 29th, for all students from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And in August, they will be conducting the 2019-2020 fifth-grade promotion celebration. Details will be mailed to the families via school phone message. And then the other announcement is just a clarification. I announced at our previous meeting that I was going to be doing a presentation for the parent engagement program at the high school. As it turns out, we had a scheduling conflict, and as a result, I was not able to present. But I look forward to other opportunities in the future. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Mike, can I mention something real quick?
Go ahead.
Lupe, I had a chance to catch up with several people this week, one of which was Mrs. Squire's, the principal at Empire. And she just wanted to extend her appreciation for your involvement in some of what they do. She just, she felt that your availability and your attendance at some of their functions has been invaluable, and sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. It is my pleasure.
Laurel?
Okay, for Fritsch Elementary School, next Wednesday, it's not June, yeah, June 3rd is next Wednesday. June 3rd, between 9:30 and 1:30, they are going to have the return-the-distance learning packets to the school. And also, they will be distributing the items left in the classroom for that. So that's going to happen in Fritsch, June 3rd. For Fremont, tomorrow, they're going to start structured student access, and the schedule is on their Facebook page, which I guess has been really active, and a lot of parents have been using that. And then also, I wanted to announce that Chloe Walt, who is the senior class president at Carson High School, is organizing a dry foods drive to benefit advocates to end domestic violence. And that will be this Saturday, May 30th, from 9:00 AM to noon at Mills Park. It is a drive-through drop-off donation. They will wear masks and socially distance as they collect your stuff, so you won't have to get out of the car. Usually, Advocates has a food drive in May through the postal service, and this year that was canceled. So this is benefiting them. So the dry goods would include pasta, uncooked rice, rice sides, cereal, cake mixes, those type of things. And I did talk to Jackie Ray, who works with Advocates, and she said one of the things that goes quickly are the cereals that kids enjoy, because usually they're families that come in. So she's like, I'm not going to, not badmouth any cereals that are more adult taste, but a lot of, one of the things that goes fast that they run out of are the cereals for children's tastes. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. So I guess from my report, I just want to say I know that this is a stressful time for all schools. And so as teachers and students and administrators and our district staff kind of race towards the final week of school or week and a half, nice job keeping us moving forward in these uncertain times and the extra effort which has been required from everybody. So we know also, a lot of parents are at home doing teaching duties and relearning math from high school that they never thought they would have to look at again. So thank you to the parents also. And then just to address, you know, I believe all of us have probably been getting a lot of information, a lot of calls, emails, public concern about the budgetary considerations which we're looking at tonight. And, you know, I just want to start by saying that this is a process that, as trustees, we're not unhappy with what's happening in the school district. This is a successful school district. We've been celebrating the success of all of our schools, and that is attributed to the hard work of all of our employees. And so as we're looking at making these required budget reductions, it's because we're required to maintain a healthy fiscal balance at this school district. And so it's not personal, and I think that probably if things continue as we're anticipating they might, we might have to look at...
We need a candle or a pizza.
Listen, we'll take a five-minute recess to let us get reconnected. All the meeting back into order. So as I was saying, that, you know, we're required to maintain a healthy fiscal balance for the school district. And as we're making these tough decisions, we're going to require everybody, everybody's going to have to work together as a team. This is, Carson City has always operated as a big family when you look at how things have gone in this district. And so there might be differences of opinion as we discuss some of the budget items or public comment. But I would just request that we do so respectfully, support our colleagues, and understand that the work that everyone does in this district is valued and respected. And I just want to maintain that same level of respect for all of our employees. And I would hate to have individuals called out by name or put in uncomfortable situations. So please keep it respectful, is my request. So with that, we'll move on to association reports. Do we have any, Renee? Okay. Mr. Maderos, do you know if we have any public comment or association reports?
Showing no public comment.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Comments may be accepted through telephonic participation or through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the times they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other if participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not to simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. And I know we have a number of public comments which have been submitted for budgetary and the nutrition services contracts, and those will be shared when we discuss those items. Do we have any public comment? Okay.
Showing no public comment.
All right. We will move on to item number seven.
Goodbye.
We will take another brief recess while we reconnect. End the meeting. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion on possible action to approve Chartwell's as Carson City School District's Nutrition Services Food Service Management Consultant for the period from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, at a cost to the district of an administrative fee not to exceed $50,000 and a management fee not to exceed eight cents per meal, with funding to come from Nutrition Fund, from the Nutrition Fund, with the option to renew annually for four years. This is for possible action, and we will have AJ lead the discussion.
Thank you, President Walker. Andrew Fealing for the record. Each, or not each, sorry. The U.S. Department of Agriculture requires that when districts contract with a food service management company, that contract can be renewed, but in total, you may only stay with that company for five years before you must go through the RFP process again. We, in this current year, are in our fifth year with Aramark and 10th year altogether. So back in January, the RFP process began with the support of some folks who are gluttons for punishment, reading 500-page submittals on some of these things and just doing some amazing work for us. Yeah. And normally, there's a buffet of food, but that didn't happen this year due to virtual circumstances. Jessica Greener, Linda Hersl, Lisa Hutchison, Stacy Wilkie, Elizabeth Snyder, and Mary Sawyer's all participated for us. Jody Mason, our purchasing supervisor, she really oversaw kind of the details of the process, a lot of the paperwork. And then myself and Mark Kornick were also helped with kind of supervising and facilitating the committee. Back in April was a busy month. We had a walk, which is required, was a required part of the process. And for this walk with the companies, we go around to, we went to an elementary school. We went to Bordwick, go to a middle school. We went to Carson Middle. No. I actually can't remember where we went anymore. And then we went to Carson High, which is kind of the highlight of lunchtime chaos. And so participating in that walk were Chartwell's, Aramark, and... I should have written down the name of the company. It was not a, they're bigger out on the East Coast, and I forget, I forget their name. But I can provide it if needed. Do you remember? I don't remember. Okay. So then, the, so we went through that walk, and after issuing the RFP and having that walk, we received two submissions back, one from Chartwell's and one from Aramark. The third company decided not to, mostly because of difficulties with the current situation related to COVID that we are in. We then did presentations with Aramark and Chartwell's. And after going through those presentations and quite a bit of discussion, the committee chose Chartwell's, or chose to recommend Chartwell's to the board to work with the district for the next school year. That recommendation had to go to Nevada Department of Agriculture, who approved it. One of the kind of strange circumstances of this year, due to the COVID coronavirus, USDA actually allowed, for the first time ever, basically a sixth-year waiver. So districts could, if they chose to, they could actually go into a sixth year of a contract. And that was something that we shared with the committee, and the committee decided against it, that they felt that this was the move that they wanted to make. So highlights, and I mentioned these in the executive summary. Chartwell's, as you remember, each year, the Aramark we were working with, they would guarantee a certain level of deficit. Sometimes they met it, sometimes they didn't, and they would have to cut us a check to meet the difference. In Chartwell's submission, they had a deficit guarantee in the first year of about $280,000. But what you'll notice within that is each year, it starts to decline. And by the fourth year, they believe that they can turn our program around so that at least break even. And then actually, in the fifth year, they have us making a bit of a surplus in that fund, which would be a significant change from where we are right now. The significant difference is with Aramark, we've had one employee onsite representing and supporting the program. In this case, the submission that Chartwell's provided, they actually have two employees. So we would have a dining director, similar to the position we do have onsite now. We would also have a full-time chef onsite, providing support to our staff. So that will be a bit of a unique addition. We have to find space for them. We'll figure that out. So that is really, most of it, we are moving to negotiate a new contract. We still have to go through that process. The contract has to go to NDA for final approval, and then we will bring that contract to you, and that likely will be at the last meeting in the month of June, so that we're ready to start the new year, possibly earlier. But it usually takes a bit of time and a bit of time for NDA to get it back to us. So with that, I'd like to thank Aramark for 10 dedicated years of service, and their current onsite person, Sandra, has been wonderful. But it looks like we are moving to a new chapter, and we have Julie Veal here from Chartwell's. That is familiar, I think, to many school boards across the state. And I will give Julie some time to speak.
I love to touch it. President Walker, trustees, to say I'm excited and grateful to be here is... President Walker, trustees, to say I'm excited and grateful to be here is, it doesn't even touch it. I told Jody when we heard the news that I feel like that kid that's been part of the family, the big family that you refer to for a very long time, and today's my chance to get adopted. So I think at times, if Mark's watching, he would have told you I was...
Once you get in, you can't get out.
Yeah. He would tell you I was kind of stalker status, but it was really important to us because we are the largest food service provider in the country. We have 660 districts across the United States. We have four in Nevada, but no two are alike. And it was really super important to me and to our operations team to make sure that we understood what you wanted and put together a program that identified that. When it came to the employees, we know that is one of your, the number-one thing in your pillars about retaining good people, attracting, retaining good people. So we put in a robust program for training and development, and then we put in a program to celebrate the wins with the team. They will have input on how we do things, and then we'll be rewarded for our success. And we really want to create some excitement about that. Education was another important thing to you guys. So we put in the chef that's going to help with education, our programming around mood boost and some other things that teach kids about healthy eating, and then we developed a partnership with UNR for externships and internships to bring even more education and work with your culinary arts program. Engagement, I know that's something that had been lacking a little bit, and we really want to make sure that we're in the community. We're not just engaging with the students, but we're engaging with the parents in your community as well. We feel that the addition of the chef is really going to facilitate that. We want you guys to be, you weren't on the tour, but if you could have seen Elizabeth when she was talking about her middle school and how proud she was at that middle school, we want to make sure that every school has that look and feel. Wellness, we will have both of our people attending and being part of your wellness committee. And then the partnership, we want to make sure that we are creating a transparent and the best kind of partnership that you guys could expect, that lines with your, with the district's vision. So anyway, I'm beside myself, I'm just happy I could be here tonight to tell you that I am looking forward to this new partnership, and if you, any of you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer them. I feel like I know almost everything about Carson City.
Go ahead.
Well, Julie, congratulations. Thank you. You know, my experience with Chartwell is limited, but when I attend the NASB functions and whatnot, you guys have hosted those, and I just find you guys to be a top-notch provider, for lack of a better term. But so, welcome to Carson City School District. I did have a couple of questions. Let's see, and some might be for A.J., but we do have a partnership, I'm thinking, with the Greenhouse folks, and I, I'm not directly involved in that, and I don't know how much you know about that partnership, but how does that collaboration work with you guys? I mean, they, they grow and provide for, I believe, the school district as well as the community, and does that factor into the food you provide to school districts, to where we can maintain a partnership, kind of a three-way partnership there?
Absolutely, and we will help, I know you guys have a very robust grant-writing team here at the district, but we also help with that, school gardens. I saw you just got another $25,000 grant for your greenhouse. So yeah, we absolutely want to work with them in that respect.
And then just to be clear, because I know people will get emails about that, when we talk about new personnel, like a chef and whatnot, I like the idea, it's great. Is that paid for through the contract, or is there an additional cost?
No, it is, it is part of our fee.
Okay.
Mr. Trustee Cassiopeo, so all of those costs, the structure of the contract is the same of the structure we had with Aramark, which is called, it's a cost-reimbursable contract. So basically, whatever, whatever costs are incurred are considered in that, kind of that final base guarantee. Ultimately, that's what kind of shows you everything in the end. So yeah, that is included in all the pricing they submitted.
And then just last question, in case anybody else has questions. I really like the idea of this, you know, decreasing obligation, and then at year four, maybe breaking even, and year five, you know, not that we're looking to earn a buck from this, but, you know, in light of what's going on, it's be nice to, you know, not have an out-of-pocket cost, or certainly less. How does this contract with Chartwell, A.J., I guess I'm asking you, compare with where we're at with Aramark? Are they dollar-wise, are they pretty close, or are we looking at any additional expenses?
It is, Chartwell's, the management and administrative fees are more expensive than Aramark's, what Aramark's have been. I think what's, what's important to understand, though, again, is that those fees and all of that is built in. Like, when it comes down to it, that guarantee number, that truly is the bottom-line thing that matters. So, you know, even if, even if Chartwell's costs were 10 times more, if they said, but bottom line, we're going to guarantee you a deficit of X, that's, or a surplus, and maybe in years to come, that's ultimately what really drives kind of the cost comparison piece of it. And just a comment too, so one of the interesting things about the nutrition program and nutrition funds, and this is nationwide because of regulations, if, if we were to get to a point where we actually turned a surplus in that fund, those funds by law have to stay in the nutrition program. So one of the, one of the benefits of getting there is we could use all that money just to drive improvements across the district, in the kitchens, and, you know, just doing all sorts of things to have nicer facilities, whatever that may be, nicer equipment, so.
We understood that it was really important to get to a cost-neutral program. We felt like with everything else that aligned with your vision, the best and fastest way to get it all done was to add the chef. The chef will drive efficiencies in the kitchen, so you'll have cost savings there, and he will also drive the programs that are going to increase participation. So we just thought that was, that was the best solution to get you to the break even as soon as possible.
I think that's a great idea, so thank you for that. You know, some of the questions I've been getting recently, especially in light of budget concerns, is, and in fact, we're going to be increasing it, is breakfast, whatever we're calling it, but feeding the students in the morning. You know, and we're finding that there's a benefit to doing that, but of course, people are commenting, given our budgetary concerns, now you're going to be spending more money and that kind of thing. As you go forward, I'd be curious to see, you know, how those numbers track, because also I know at the end of, say, a meal period or whatever, we probably wind up discarding some lunches and whatnot, and I'm curious how that all balances out. And I don't expect an answer now, but as you go forward, I'm just kind of curious how that works out. How many extra meals are we providing, and is there, you know, is there some correlation that shows us, you know, what we're doing? One is working, we're seeing benefit, which isn't your, your thing, but money-wise and how you guys are preparing meals, how that impacts?
Yeah.
What we're doing. I didn't really speak very eloquently on that, but I think you see what I'm saying.
You initially moved three of the elementaries to breakfast in the classroom. It increased almost 30% of your breakfast participation. We're recommending to put the other three on for the reasons you mentioned. Kids learn better when they have a full belly. In our proposal, we did put in money to facilitate that program, the roller cart, so it will cover the cost to do the program.
And so I guess that's my question. That's all included in that guaranteed deficit? So I think that's important for people to know. Thank you.
And just a question, because I know the schools that already had the breakfast in the classroom were pretty much free and full, free and reduced lunch schools. Will the students at these three schools that it's being added to be paying, or will that be included in the cost of it, or will this be something where we're having parents sign up to pay for the breakfast?
Sure. So, so as of right now, Mark, our Empire Elementary qualifies as a provision-two school. Mark Twain and Fremont Elementary's qualify as CEP schools. So in layman's terms, all the students there for breakfast or for lunch eat free for every single meal. We're currently, we've been actively looking at, for about three months, all of the other schools in the district to see if, if something like that would make sense in some of those other schools. So there's still some more work to do. So at this time, they don't qualify for that type of status, but we are very closely watching. One of the things that determines your eligibility for that is the percentage of students that come from homes that qualify for some type of federal benefit, like TAMP, SNAP, food stamps, Medicaid, any of those things, they call those direct certifiers. If, if a family has that, the percentage of kids within a building that have that, if they reach a certain point, it, it can make sense to run that kind of program. And given what we're going through right now, we've been tracking this, and actually in the last month, it's already gone up 2%. And so we're waiting kind of until this last moment in June to see if that's something that would make sense. And it, ideally, it would be nice if we could actually do it at all three elementaries, so then every elementary is the same. But we need to work through a little bit more that it would make sense to run that.
And just speaking as a parent that has students at one of those elementary schools that, they all have snacks, and they usually bring their own snacks. And if breakfast in the classroom may, whatever we're looking at for school in the fall, perhaps bringing your own snacks may be a little more risky than having breakfast provided in the classroom for them, so that then there's not that 10 o'clock snack attack that they all seem to have. And also, I just wanted to say with Chartwell's too, I've been following the, I stopped stalking it, but one of the other trustees in another district in Nevada that had moved to Chartwell's was posting pictures of the lunches, and I kept looking at them going, I'd eat that for lunch. So I'm really excited about it, because it's, it's very, it looks to be very good quality, very, very appetizing lunch menus for the kids. It's not quite the Saturday, wives get lunch. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
The breakfast in the classroom, how much time are the kids given to eat, and is that part of their school day where they could be learning, or?
It is. So I don't, I actually don't know the exact time. I don't know if there's a regulation around how long they have to eat. It runs differently in different schools, and we've found that it's more efficient to run in certain ways. And Fremont seems to have this down pat right now with having a cart out in the hallway, the kids run out, grab their stuff, get back in the room. And, you know, within however many minutes, they're finishing the meal. One of the things I know that has been promoted, even in my kind of school business world, when looking at those programs, is how do you, how do you make that not a loss of learning time? What do you do to engage kids as they're eating? You know, is it, is it talking, like, there's health curriculum at the elementary level that has to be covered, you know, nutrition's a part of that? So would that be a quick time that you can engage with some of those pieces and, and kind of be done, and then you move on? So Julie, I don't know if you have more to say, like, what that experience looks like, or?
I was actually touring Fremont this last winter, I guess it's been a while now, and they brought the lunch in, the kids picked it up and came into classroom when I was there, and the teacher was doing warm-up activities, so there was a couple of questions for them to discuss. They were just eating their lunches and having the discussion answer, or answering questions. There was very little disruption with it, because the breakfast was, it's not quite as big as lunch, so it was very easy for the students to eat it and continue on with the activity that was, the learning activity that they were engaged in.
Good, thank you. Just one other additional question real quick. Is, in year four, it's supposed to be deficit-neutral? Is there anything in the contract if it doesn't become neutral in the end of the fourth year?
So, so each year, each year of the contract, or I should say, each annual contract is really kind of a beast unto itself. So when Chartwell's is going through and they're looking at, you know, here's the numbers that we think we can drive, and based on the revenues and what we can do with efficiencies and credits on food purchase, volume, food purchases, they think that over time, they can get to that point. But truly, it's, it's a year-to-year thing. So when we come back next year, I mean, I think the, the point in time, it will be kind of difficult, but to say, you know, the guarantee right now is 280,000, we believe we're tracking at, say, 260. So say it's a little bit better, or it's 290, just a little bit worse. I mean, that, that's the kind of thing. So there's no, there's no true guarantee four years out, but based on their best estimates from all the districts that they work with, the path they think they can lead us down, they think they can get there. But it truly is, it's a one-year contract. So each year, I mean, it would be hard after one year to really kind of know where you end up, but I think certainly after two, you'd see how year one ended up, and you'd see how year two is going if, if, you know, you weren't happy with that.
And we talked to the other districts, the committee did, and they followed pretty much what they proposed. There was one that was a little out of whack, but it was really close. And that was one of the things, especially with the committee, with the budget concerns, we were worried about, you know, a $280,000 deficit compared to what Aramark was saying. But Aramark hasn't come close to what they were projecting they could come to. So that made us feel a little uneasy there, too. So, where was I going with this? So one of the things was, they added the chef. We have, oh, I know where I was going. When we first started getting a contractor, we were taking a half a million dollars out of the general fund. And so two members of this committee, me and Linda Hersel, have been on this committee every single time. So we've seen how these contracts go with, we do the guarantees, but they always seem to go over anyway. I mean, Aramark's was over 300,000 this last time, and it was, when you read, the contract says 250. So there are other things that come into it that aren't in the contract, that aren't covered by the guarantee. But they have a really good record from the companies, the people that we talked to, to keep that going. So, and they were all excited, too, about the internships, the education. Julie and her team really did their homework. They, you know, they knew our strategic plan, they knew our wellness committee, they were really involved and hit just about every checkmark that every member had in the, in the presentation, and in the 500 pages we had, too. We're really excited. I think we needed to shake it up a little. They're also saying that they're going to be coming to, like, open houses and stuff, so they'll meet with parents and stuff. Their food has been amazing, looks good, tasted good last year, or five years ago when we had the first one. But the committee really, really did struggle with this because of the financial impact and the difference between the two. And, and it was split, it wasn't a unanimous decision with the committee, but they just felt that because they have shown that they actually get to the marks that they've put, depending on how COVID and all that goes, that we were willing to take that chance with them and make it up in the four years that we could. So, but it was really hard with this, this year.
Thank you.
A.J., I'm sorry, is anyone else up?
Sure. And just, if you guys just would indicate you want to ask questions, it's kind of hard with everybody so spread out, I can't just look down and see. So I know Stacy was waiting a while to ask her questions.
I pretty much, it just helped me segue from Mr. Varner's to tell you, that's basically what the committee had done, and if anybody had any questions about that, I'd be willing to answer those.
A.J., can you refresh our memory? You know, we had conversations a while ago as to why are we even going down this road? We used to, in years past, kind of, for lack of a better term, handle it internally. And I'm sure, again, when we talk about budget deficits, people are going to say, is this costing us more money than if we just ran this internally?
Sure. Yeah, some, some districts still, they call self-op, they run their own operation there. Back in 2009, I believe, or 2008, there were some pretty hefty changes in school nutrition rules that came about. And the, you had kind of a confluence of three events. You had the nutrition program as things were supposed to be getting healthier, started losing money. And then you had the recession come in, and money became even a much bigger concern. And then, and then you had some of these, the changes in the rules, which are rather complicated. I mean, just to be blunt, what, what our nutrition workers know about what a reimbursable meal is, is insane to me. I mean, they, they know just by looking at a meal if it's reimbursable or not, based on, does it have a cup of this, a half cup of that, and all this sort of thing. So at that time, there was, I believe, somebody who was, it was someone who was retiring, the then-director, and there was kind of this natural chain of events that led this to be kind of a consideration. And so that was... And so that was, you know, looked into and considered. And, and I think really it was between the financial concerns and kind of the complexity concerns that were starting to happen and looking at, you know, potentially being able to manage all that and still save some money to that fund. That was kind of the initial move towards that. I don't, I don't think I know much more than that, but Mrs. Wilkie, trust me with it.
The other thing you have to take into account is that we're retaining our own employees. And that's where the biggest cost is. There are districts that have Chartwell provide the employees and their benefits where we don't. We keep our own staff. And actually Churchill split it up where they have, as people leave, they're being put back with Chartwell's people and that's not working real well. But you'd have to do one or the other. But that, that's part of that, that negative deficit that we see is because we want to keep our own employees. Now, if we wanted to look at that with the budget thing and sourcing that out to Chartwells, that's something we could look at. But that's another part of this piece that has added cost.
Sorry, just to be, to be really clear, because I know there's concern, that, that is not a part of this transition. The, the current setup with Airmark will continue to be the exact same setup with Chartwells, except we're adding one more employee from Chartwells, but nothing with our own staff changes whatsoever. Thank you.
So I would just say that, you know, you're at a lot of our meetings and events, Julie, and I look forward to working with you and hopefully you stay as active as we go forward. It's nice to have a face with a name. But then also, you know, some of the discussion about school breakfast, I think one of the things that is unknown by many people is how many kids are truly living with food insecurity, you know? And there's a number of kids who come to school and they are not ready to learn because there is no food in their house. And if you want to know, if you want to see a real good example, come to an elementary school when there's like a snow day and a kid gets there past the time breakfast is served and it's almost lunchtime and that kid comes in and it's, they're counting on that meal. And, you know, they're coming in and telling their principal, they need breakfast, you know, and we're all scrambling to find something for them. So it's, I really support expanding that because even in our non-title schools, there are students who are on free and reduced lunch, who are at, living in homes without meals for their kids. And I think that in this current economic situation, more families than we even could guess right now are probably going to start the fall with some of these same concerns. And so I think that this is really the best way to go about supporting our kids and hopefully identifying the kids that need those meals. And, you know, it takes a few extra minutes in the morning, but I think that it's a management piece. So teachers learn how to get those kids their meals and you just start the day. And some people are going to need a little bit of practice, but those kids need food. And so I just, I just want to say that I'm really supportive of that. And, and really, you know, Mr. Stokes and I talked about this a little bit today, is nutrition services is one of those areas that oftentimes there's a deficit. And special education is another one of those. And there are services that are essential for our students and I think that we're, we're doing the best we can to kind of mitigate that. Thank you. I'm going to call for a public comment. Did you have a, just? Oh, we could, we could. Sure, go ahead.
I moved that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approved Chartwells as Nutrition Services Food Service Management Consultant for the Carson City School District from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, at the cost to the district of an administrative fee not to exceed $50,000 and imagine, excuse me, and a management fee not to exceed eight cents per meal with funding to come from the nutrition fund, with the option to renew annually for four years.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Joe, second by Dawn. Any further discussion by the board? All right. And I'll call for a public comment. And I know we have a number, so.
Andres, you are unmuted.
Hi, this is Andres Montoya. I'm the district manager for Airmark. And we all agree that this pandemic has completely altered the way we work and will work for the unforeseeable future. It's changing the way we, we're now part of planning reopening strategies and really being mindful of the students and our, and our staff. One of the things that, changing members can be a very stressful ordeal. Changing food service managing companies can be outright chaotic. Now you add the stress of doing this in the middle of a pandemic where we have to take into consideration reopening processes and social distancing, not to mention participation changes and everything in between. It's for that reason that the USDA passed the waiver allowing school districts to exercise that six-year, so that school districts that are in the middle of this situation can hold off from doing this for at least one more year. It's not to replace the RFP process, it's just to not have school districts do this during the middle of all this madness and really helping the sanity of our employees. If you were to ask Elizabeth Snyder, the leader of the Food Service Department, and a lot of our site managers, they are inundated right now with stress and anxiety of having to switch food management companies. And so the district can't help in preventing much of this. School districts across the country are utilizing this waiver, not because they are trying to go one direction or the other, but because they're doing this in the best interest of their employees. And then, so Airmark is prepared to go one more year to help the school district get out of this situation. And then next year, the school district is of course free to go with any company they choose to. We are here to provide services for you until the very last day and we have fulfilled our promises. One of the things I want to kind of bring up is Airmark proposed a guarantee that's $220,000 better than what Chartwell's provided. And so, and we would honor that for this coming year. And we've been providing, we've been honoring our, our guarantees. In year three, we brought the deficit down to a minus 190. In year four, it was a minus 219. And this year, we were on pace to be at a minus $100,000 in subsidy. And so I just want to make sure that the board is aware of this information and to, if for no other reason, that please, please keep in mind your frontline employees. Food services is one of the most essential departments in a school district because as one of the board members, trustees mentioned, this is where, for many students, this is, these are their only meals. And we've been doing that successfully for the last 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andres.
Showing no other public comment?
All right. I know that Renee has some to read for the record.
Mr. President, I have several public comments that were provided to me via email. And so the first one that I will read, this is from Sandy Dobson, who is the cafeteria manager at Seliger Elementary School. She was hired in 1989 and has seen many changes in the nutrition department through the years. Having had 30-plus years in our district, I have had the pleasure to work with many different challenges, managers and coworkers, to name a few. My experience with Airmark has been nothing but great. I have been, excuse me, I have just witnessed throughout the pandemic of COVID-19, their commitment, along with Sandra Ramirez stepping up and helping whenever we needed her with everything without hesitation. She made this amazing. Through all this, she worked well with our department. She is phenomenal in communication and professional management and makes it look easy while doing it. I just would love to have them stay through this uncertain times. It would be detrimental to our department to have another food service management company come in, which would add more stress at this time. Thank you. The next public comment, this is from Ms. Janice Mandoki, who's the cafeteria manager at Bordowick Bray. She states that she's the manager at Bordowick Bray and would like to express her concerns in regards to the hiring of Chartwells. It is my understanding that Chartwells is more expensive than Airmark. How does this help the district? We, excuse me, when we already have been doing budget cuts? Due to the COVID-19 concerns, how can we blindly take on a new company while trying to adhere to the governor's COVID-19 requirements? If you decide to choose Chartwell, will that affect staffing in the kitchens? The next board member, excuse me, a public comment is from Bev Heath, the cafeteria manager at Carson Middle School. I'm writing this letter in reference to the food management company for our district's upcoming renewed contract. I was unable to be on the committee as in years past, however, I would like to share my opinion on the future of our school years with regards to Airmark's continued service with our district. Having the pandemic these last few months has been nothing but craziness, stressful and a learning curve in our department as well as everywhere. Having Airmark here along with Sandra Ramirez during this time has been tremendously helpful. With that being said, having someone here that has worked and done amazing through all this, working in each kitchen, excuse me, kitchen, running here and there, all over to pick up various items needed to serve our students, the reimbursable and healthy meals our families need for our children at this time. All of the items that we, excuse me, all of the items that we have never imagined needing, she has figured out a way to get, to provide to other district students. Again, with all this being said and the way the COVID-19 situation is, I feel that bringing a new food service management company in for the new school year will even be more stressful and challenging during these times. The last thing we need is more change. It would be hard on all of us if we were to open with a new company. Airmark has been helpful in many ways, even before the pandemic, such as creating new menus, new items for students, providing us knowledge to prepare and cook items more efficiently, recipes that the students like, special treats on holidays, and the list goes on. Airmark has done a great job for our district in my experience. Thank you. The next comment is from Joe Hensley from Carson High School. I'm writing this letter on behalf of keeping Airmark as a vendor in the Carson City School District. I find that the quality of food that we serve our students through the nutrition program is good quality and would like to see that we continue with Airmark as a vendor. Sandra is incredible and does such a great job planning meals and offering such a great selection. She has been amazing through this epidemic and is always available when we call her. I hope you will consider keeping with Airmark to a good 2020 school year in August. The next letter is from Angie Charles. She wanted to provide her comments in, in keeping Airmark. We've been through an incredibly tough year and change has been crazy. It would be nice to start the school year continuing with the same program for nutrition to help ease back in. Sandra has been an amazing guide through this whole epidemic and at a time like this is so appreciated. I hope you will consider my thoughts. The next comment is from Terry Teeter. She would like to take the opportunity to voice her opinion to keep Airmark for another year. Sandra has been working very hard this past year and it has been a pleasure to work with her. She has been a great help during the pandemic and I would like to continue to work with her again. The next comment is from Chyree Carter. She's emailing in response to the district considering choosing another outside food provider other than Airmark. I have worked in the nutrition department for 10 years and in that 10 years have known Airmark as our provider. They've been a great company to us, always listening and taking our opinions and, and advice into consideration. I have seen how slowly the managers, excuse me, I have seen how closely the managers of the kitchens are able to work with our local Airmark representative and how beneficial that is to all the kitchens. To choose to leave a company that we have worked so close with and have developed such a great relationship within our district that I believe would be foolish. And that is all the comments that I have at this time via email, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any other additional telephone participation, Raymond?
I'm not showing any other public comment.
All right, thank you. And I think that certainly on behalf of the board, I want to say it sounds like Sandra has done a phenomenal job since she's been with us and we recognize that. And we too share those accolades, so thank you to Sandra.
Can I address one?
Yes, you may.
So just to address some of those, because those were some of the same concerns that the committee had. Number one, Sandra's done a great job, but there have been people in that position that haven't. When we did this five years ago, we had Tim and he was great. He was at all the wellness committees, he was real helpful with staff. And it was really close between Chartwells and Airmark that time. The finances were the same, the product was, you know, the same, there were a lot of similarities. And the one thing that tipped that scale was Tim. And six months later, he was gone. And it's known in the nutrition part that this, there's turnover. So we really asked the committee not to put, to use that, to use Sandra as a, as a plus or a minus, because that's a changing thing and we've seen how it works. That's number one. AJ, maybe you can explain a little bit more about what Mr. Airmark, Andrew was saying about the, their breakdown of 190 to 100, because that wasn't my understanding. Well, their guarantee was 60,000. And they hadn't come close to that in the 10 years that we had them, so.
And wasn't it like 250 for the last several years?
So, in the last, so what Andres was talking about is if you go back and look at, I think the original guarantee back in, five years ago was like 250. And then I think it was 250 again. And I think it dropped to like 225 and then it dropped to like 218. This last year, it went up to 305. But the, in the first year, Airmark missed the guarantee by like $90,000. In the second year, they missed it by like 7,000. In the, in the third year, the deficit came in at like 198,000. So they actually came in under the guarantee. And the next year, I think it, it came in around a 200, I think he said 218. That seems a little high, but I think it was actually, it might have been a little lower. But basically they came in under that deficit again. And so, and then he was saying, based on the, the pace they had for things this year, if you're going into the beginning of, probably through the end of February, they feel like they were on pace for about $100,000 deficit versus the guarantee of 305. So it's just, I think trying to show the, kind of the, the change in deficit and guarantees over time and where they, where they have come in. As far as the, the comment on the $220,000 difference, Airmark's guarantee was a deficit of 60,000. It was a guarantee, a guarantee deficit of 60,000 every year going out. There was, there was a slight change each year, but it was 60,000 each year going out.
And just to back up on that, when I asked them, because that was my question, you're coming from this high and you're going all the way down to 60. How were you expecting to, to make that difference up? And it was doing something at Carson High, which they've had, they've been saying that for five years, that they were working on Carson High and breakfast in the classroom. So we're hoping that Chartwells is going to do even better than we can expect. But that was, they really couldn't answer, for me anyway, my personal opinion was, they didn't answer my question. And if, if they could do that, why haven't they been doing that for the last five years? We haven't been, one of the things I will say though, we haven't been very good at watching it year to year, even though it's a, it's a five-year contract and it's year to year. And I really told the committee and staff that I think that we really have to keep our eye on that from now on. We can't let that slip by and that we have to know that that's what we're looking at from now on. Because we do have that option as a board to say, well, we're not going to renew it for another year. And we almost did that at one of our meetings anyway. As far as the COVID thing is, I talked to the other districts and just like our people, they've said that Chartwells has stepped up in every way possible there too. So it, it was not an easy decision for this committee and we had to meet twice after the presentations to, to really talk about it. But it just felt, I understand change is hard for everyone. I am concerned about that with the staff. We did ask that of Chartwells, of how much more increased time it was going to be for staff. They said there shouldn't be anymore. And having the chef onboard might even actually lessen it. They can make changes in the menu a lot faster because they have the chef there. If we're finding there's a lot of waste, we can move that menu along. But we do, the, the committee did understand that change would be, and we really did miss having Bev on the committee. We really, she was on. We really, she's, was on it last year, and she was just great, and, and to have that aspect in there. But, but there was, like I said, there was a big financial difference. But we don't know if they were going to meet that anyway, they, because they haven't met it before. And we were a little discouraged about that.
Stacy, do you remember when, five years ago, when Airmark did, was, was part of their plan at that point to reach a break even or a, a start to raise income plan when they presented it five years ago? Was that part of it, or was it always just a guarantee?
Yeah, it was just a guarantee. Neither one of the companies five years ago had never had a gradual thing, as far as I remember. But when we got the original proposals five years ago, it was, it was 280, and this is how it's going to go, or 25, 250. And this is something new, is seeing this gradual thing. And that's why we contacted Churchill and Elko and Lincoln, no Humboldt, and talked to them in depth about seeing how they, if they actually did keep that gradual. And Humboldt had, had bottomed out at one point, but the sixth year, they made it up, so. You know, because we were, we were really sketched about how anybody could make these gradual changes when we haven't seen them for 10 years. Of course, I didn't understand the, the process that that goes through, but none of us had seen it, but.
Thank you. Richard?
Obviously, you listened to the public comment. There's a lot of, I guess, stress involved with switching to a different company. I guess the question would be is, how do you see the transition going? And any way to reduce the stress on the staff during the transition period?
Hi, I'm glad you asked. We actually have a call with Mr. Feeling and Elizabeth and Mary Sawyers, and anyone else who was, well, Mark, and anyone else who wants to join us this Thursday. We're having it at that time because we're, Elizabeth, this is going to be on a call with us from our president of our company, talking about our playbook for rolling out the next school year in the pandemic and different options for school districts. So we have a plan in place for that. So right after that call, we're going to have this call. We're going to talk, we're going to introduce the regional team that will be out here setting up the account and helping with the transition and the training and the menus. And then we will also be talking about next steps on communications and what that looks like with the district as a whole and the employees. And from that point, we'd like to set up a Zoom call, unless we can do something in person with the employees to address any questions that they have. Because really, it's going to take, it's going to take the family to be successful here. We know that, and that's part of the reason we're putting in the milestone celebrations, because we know that, you know, how they operate is going to be impactful. So it's going to be a lot of communication. And it starts this Thursday after the call about the rollout for next school year.
And they had more training and development in their package than Airmark did too, which made a lot of people feel, on the committee, that that was good, especially some of the employees.
I just got a comment, I guess it's kind of hard when you have so many employees wanting to stay with one company versus the other, and then you add the cost savings, the alleged cost savings into it. I think it adds a little bit more difficulty to this decision.
I, I do think that's a really good point, though. If, if they can cut the deficit to 60,000, this, and that's their proposal, why haven't they been doing that? Why have we been paying the 250-plus every year in the deficit out of our general fund if they can do that? So I, I, I have hesitancy to take that, I, I, I have hesitancy to put value and credibility on that, where the committee evaluated both proposals very thoroughly. The evaluation and the meetings that you had occurred during this pandemic time. So I think the committee was aware of the unusual circumstances with the pandemic. I, I, I tend to lean towards wanting to uphold what the committee is recommending, because they had all of the facts, they had all of the comparisons, and they've put in the work. If we were to postpone a year, we'd have, we would still have to do the, what is it, RFP? Is that the, yeah, RFP again next year, and then put in that time and work again next year. Is there a cost to the district in doing the RFP, other than just the personnel time? Lots of time?
Well, I think that one of the other, one of the things that I think also is, knowing how often Julie is at these meetings and our school functions, we know if things aren't going well, we have somebody there to say, hey, what are we doing about this? And, you know, if, if we went, if we supported the work of this committee and their recommendation, and your one was a disaster, you know, we would revisit that. So I mean, I think that, I'm confident in the fact that we have a presence. I mean, we had a presence even when they weren't our company. And so that, I think, is huge for me. That's knowing that we have somebody here that, if I'm getting a bunch of emails from people at schools, I could say, all right, Julie, what's going on with this? I know that if Mr. Stokes needs to get in touch with Julie, he's going to know exactly where she is. I mean, that is reassuring to me. But I understand your concerns as well. Joe, I know Joe had his hand raised.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I, I appreciate what Airmark presented just now in public comments. I'm sure, like all companies, you know, they mean well, and sometimes things don't go exactly the way you intended them to go. But I know personally, during Airmark's tenure, I had asked them for a few things that I thought were pretty simple, and they weren't able to meet any of them. One was as simple as posting some basic nutritional values at the school sites, so that a student who might pay attention to that stuff, and some do, they could look at, you know, gee, what's better, this or this? And after not being heard two times in a row, I was, I was told, well, they can look that up on our website. And I didn't think that was the right answer. I've, as a consumer, been to several of the schools and paid to eat meals, and wasn't always impressed with what we were calling nutrition. I know it can't be perfect with kids, because if you feed them flaxseed and kale, you know, they're not going to be overly thrilled. But, you know, I, I think moving a little closer to that nutrition is where I'd like to see us go. And I feel comfortable that, you know, that's a direction Chartwell can get us to. And I know we, as a district, play a part in that certainly. But that's my two cents.
Anybody else have any comments before we call the question?
No, I, I just think that a couple of good comments, Laurel, Mike, about supporting the work of the committee. I think, you know, that goes a long ways and carries a lot of weight.
All right. See no further discussion, I will, Raymond? Yeah. Public comment.
L. Hersel, you are unmuted.
Hi, this is Linda Hersel, and I was one of the members of the committee. And like it's been stated before, I was on the original committee and then the five-year review committee. When we first decided to go with Airmark, all of our kitchen managers and staff were very nervous then. They were really worried about going with an outside company running our food service. And Scott at the time with Airmark came in, and he was the perfect person for the job, because he made it very easy, worked well with our staff. What, one of the turning points for me with this decision we made, because it was not easy, and again, Sandra has done a phenomenal job, Andre the same thing. When Chartwell did their presentation and the 500 pages that we read, it was like they wanted us so bad. They knew our district inside out, and it was like, it felt good that they wanted to be us, and how much research they had done, and were not even part of our district at the time. And I think adding that chef, that's going to give that much more help to the different schools and staff to be able to make these changes. I think with the pandemic, maybe this is the time, because everything's going to kind of change and do it all at one time rather than waiting a year to go through the process again. But I, with Julie there, I mean, my biggest thing is, if you guys come in with the same enthusiasm that you came into the presentation with, you're going to be a winner. They talked to us, they knew their proposal inside out. I asked a couple of questions of Airmark about their proposal, and they were not able to answer them. So that was one of the things that made a difference in my vote. So just thought I would give that comment, having been on the committee both times, or three times now.
Well, Linda, we want to thank you for your service and taking the time to participate in that, as well as Stacy representing us on this committee and everybody else who's on the committee. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, Raymond?
Showing no other public comment.
All right, so I will call the question. All those in favor of selecting Chartwells for our nutrition company signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like there's some potential recruitment opportunities here local. All right, we'll move on to the, actually, I want to take, let's take a five-minute recess. I just want to talk to staff real quick. Call the meeting back into session. The next item on the agenda is item number eight, Presentation of Budget, Presentation Timeline and Introduction of Topics for the Public Hearing on the Budget for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021, Including Brief Discussion. This is for discussion only, and it'll be led by AJ Feeling.
Thank you, President Walker. Again, good evening, trustees. Tonight is officially the budget hearing for the, it's called the Original Final Budget for the Carson City School District. There's, there's three parts to this, three, and they're kind of agendized that way. And we'll, we'll take pauses kind of between those items and make sure you have time for questions. And please feel free to interrupt me at any point, as long as you have that thought crossing your mind. Can take care of it, and I'll answer whatever I can. So agenda item number eight has to do with the budget timeline. I usually start these with a quote, and it may offer some of the only levity for this evening, but I thought you might appreciate this. Nevada ranks 13th in the nation in average teacher salaries. We are fifth in the western states. We rank 15th in the nation in per, per, on pupil teacher ratio. We are eighth in the nation for median number of school years completed by persons 25 years and older. We reputedly have the highest literacy rate in the nation. We are fourth in the nation on the basis of money spent per pupil. Now, that seems to go against quite a bit of what we know, and that's because it's not what we know. what we know. It's what we knew in 1963. I stole that quote from someone, but it was so good, I felt like I had to share it. Okay. So looking at the, to start the preparation timeline, and we'll get into talking about the capital plan, we have Mr. Mark Kornick as a panelist tonight, so he will come in to, he will zoom in to work through some of the capital improvement plan details. And then we'll get into the formal budget presentation and then present the resolution for your consideration. So the, the timeline, really, it starts at the beginning of, excuse me, the given school year, or the, the prior school year. Once we get into October, we are looking at enrollment across all the schools, the, the change in enrollment across grade levels, so students moving from first to second grade, second to third grade, what we call survival ratios, how they survive into the next grade level. And then really based on looking at those starting numbers and what we see as a trend in those, those ratios, we start generating kind of projections of what we look at or expecting in the next incoming year. We also look at birth rates across Carson City and try to make some kind of, make it some correlation between the number of births and then five years later, the number of kindergartners that show up, so try to project that out over time. The first updated budget projections that, that we have come right after the audit, and it's mostly kind of updating some numbers from the audit in November. And then we start really looking at, at that time, like what does next year seem to look like based on a certain number of students and all the, the needs given those students' estimated projected revenues? How, how does that all look? So we get into a more formal process then, starting in January, where we're having regular meetings, kind of just taking a look at how things seem to be and making sure that things look accurate and then start talking about things we may need to do to get it into a better place. In February, March, we get, February and March, we get revenue projections from taxation. There's the preliminary and then the final. And those are kind of some of the last pieces we need to put together revenues for, at least for the general fund. We do our presentation to you of the tentative budget, which is not for your approval, but for your information and as a discussion item. And that has to be done, or turned into the Department of Taxation by April 15th of, of the year for the next year. After the discussion on the tentative budget, any fine tuning that may need to occur happens over that next month, month and a half, depending. And then we start putting together that final document. On the 20th and 23rd of this month, there was a public notice put into the Nevada Appeal notifying people of this meeting, and specifically notifying that it was going to be virtual, just as a kind of a different situation for us. Tonight, we are officially in our budget hearing. By June 8th, I need to turn in a final, original final budget to the Department of Taxation and actually to Department of Education and to the county clerk as well. One of the things to note, normally at this point, I say, once we get into the school year and we get, then we get our audit done in November, by the end of December, we do an amended final budget, which is always kind of strange because you're doing a, an amendment to your budget for the current year that you're in, which just the timing seems odd with that. But this year, I, I think it's really important to understand that if the state were to call a special legislative session, which would likely happen this summer, after that session happens, you have 30 days to amend your budget again. So if the state, with all the COVID things going on, and I'll, I'll speak to some of the impacts a little bit later, if, if they decide, if the governor decides they need to have a special session and they would reduce funding for education or for all state agencies, hopefully that would likely happen this summer. And then as soon as they convene, are, are done, signed aye, I think it's called, then we would be able to use those numbers to amend the budget at that point in time. Okay.
A.J., real quick, have you heard, like, through your work on the commission, I've heard both ways, that they're trying not to have a special session, and then every once while you hear somebody say a special session's coming? Do you have any indication which it is?
The only, the only thing I have heard is in the, and I'll talk about it a little bit, the May 13th meeting of the Inter, Interim Finance Committee, Legislature, the governor's top budget person, Susan Brown, was speaking about a number of things and about the budget cuts and, and basically just the fact that she said special session kind of made me think that clearly this is on their radar. And, and really based on a lot of the numbers that we've been looking at, I, I don't know how they couldn't, I don't know how they could not avoid that. It would take something especially significant to, to get away from that. Okay, so we are in the second year of the biennium. We, again, we, we know, we do know our per pupil number. We, we have our final number for this year. Unlike the first year of a biennium, we don't always have that. But again, if we do, if we would have a special legislative session, those numbers may get modified. Hopefully, if that happens, it's sooner than later, but the, the timing is truly out of our control. Looking on into the following year, fiscal '22, then you have the start of the Pupil Center Funding Plan. So I, I guess I just say that because I've been telling you so much about this change in funding that is coming and how we are going to be in this whole harmless state and how this is going to be very problematic for us. That is not this, this coming budget. That is the following year, so it has nothing to do with this new funding model, as this is upcoming is truly the last year of the old Nevada plan model. For class size reduction, we have, we do not know what our funding level is yet for that fund. Special ed, we do not officially have a number for that fund yet. We'll be talking a little bit about the future of instructional technology, the growth of costs in special education, and then nutrition services as well. Lastly, looking a little bit over capital projects, talk, Mr. Kornick will talk a little bit about some of the ongoing work that's happening, mentioning some revisions, and I did mention during the tentative budget presentation, there are significant changes to the, the capital improvement plan, and that is primarily because of the, the timing of projects happening over fiscal years. So trying to figure out for, say, well, if you had a project that started in May or April, you're going to incur some costs going up to June 30th, and you have this kind of awkward break in the fiscal year. So trying to plot out what we really think the costs are for the rest of the current year, and then what's going to be left to spend to finish the project in the new fiscal year. So we'll, we'll go over that. Of note, just the, the amount of funds for capital projects will be used heavily late in the year. We have the Eagle Valley Expansion Project in particular, but also looking at redoing the Carson High Football and Track setup, and then some work on the district office as well. And then this capital improvement plan will be revised again, likely once we have audited numbers back, or in, in December with the rest of the amendments that take place. Any questions or comments about that?
We'll go Richard and then Joe.
With the classroom size upcoming year, I guess it's supposed to be 27 to 1, is that going to affect or have any effect on maybe the amount of money we get for classroom reduction?
So there's a, a really important distinction that I'm going to try to, to explain tonight when we get into the budget, but we have this situation where you have the budget, the, the budget, original budget that's being presented, which is very similar to the tentative budget, really hasn't changed, the ratios haven't changed, no, nothing has really changed since March. And then you have this incredibly difficult time, it appears, that could be coming, and trying to prepare for what would be a worst case scenario. And so, so they're two very different things. This budget represents class size ratios that we are accustomed to in the district for the most part. 27 to 1 is not a part of this budget, but it is a part of the, the preparation work that we're doing if a worst case scenario comes up in the summer.
I think an important distinction, probably just even for the people listening at home, you know, by law, we're required to pass this budget by, and submit it by June 8th, and we've been working on this all year. We are using our best projections, which we've been working on all year before this health crisis. And so it's important for people to understand, and I keep trying to explain this to people when I talk to them, what we're doing tonight is what we've been working on all year, based on our, you know, our biggest worry was the new funding model and kind of closing those deficits that we talked to A.J. about last year. The real, the real impact of this financial crisis is going to hit us when we get some more guidance from the state, and that's, that hasn't truly been accounted for yet. And I think that what the district office has been working with our site principals about is to try to put some best case scenarios in place in most of our schools and hoping that 27 to 1 is the worst it gets, if, if I could be so blunt.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because the funding hasn't been set for classroom reduction yet.
Right.
So I didn't know if perhaps they'd get the idea that the classroom size is going to go up, so they may not give us as much money.
And, and I apologize, I, I didn't, I didn't answer that part of your question.
We're just talking about timeline right now, aren't we? I don't, this discussion would be taking part in the budget part, right?
Yeah, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, and I think, I think what Richard is just trying to, he's trying to understand for himself, and so the projection is, it's two different things. So that hasn't been set by the state yet going forward.
But it's still part of the discussion for the budget, not the timeline, and which is this agenda item?
So, Joe?
Just an easy question.
Thank you.
A.J., are you going to, in, when we talk about the budget, I mean, not that it's going to solve all our woes, even with the, the projection we're talking about in this budget, but are you going to discuss what kind of savings we have seen, if any, as a result of distance learning? There's been some cost to the district that we probably haven't incurred?
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I, I don't have that built into the presentation, but you can certainly, I can take note of it. It effectively impacts where we start the next budget year, so I, I think it's appropriate that we, we could talk about that. So if I, if I forget, please remind me and we can, we can talk a little bit about that.
Any other questions of A.J. about the timelines? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number nine, Discussion on Possible Action to Approve the Revised Capital Improvement Plan for the Carson City School District for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021. This is for possible action, and we will have A.J. Feeling and Mark Kornick leading the discussion.
All right, thank you, President Walker. In your packets with the attached agenda item, you have a copy of the Proposed Capital Improvement Plan. This document is also inside your budget document as well, but it, but Renee is so nice to separate it out for us so that we can look at it individually. This document looks similar to the format of prior years. You have some projects that are funded by our Capital Projects Fund, which are in orange, some that are in blue, which are funded out of our bond funds. None of the projects on here are anything that you have not seen before. They were all, I believe, as a part of the amended budget, very similar to the last amended, amended budget that happened in December. So there's been some modifications. Again, I have to take in consideration the timing for some of these projects and how the flows of money kind of happen. The, sorry. So it, it reflects work that was long ago, for the most part, part of the facilities master planning process. It reflects all work that Bond Oversight Committee has, has known and approved of, and in projects that effectively the board has already approved with the last amended budget. One thing to note, at the top in the, the, the orange area, the, there's some orange text and black text, and orange text and black text. And so the, that second round of black text, it says available, pay as you, or pay go, pay as you go. And there's some, some large numbers there, and what that reflects is the district is required to keep in reserve in its debt service fund 50%, the value has to be 50% of what your principal and interest payments will be for that coming year. So it forces you to keep some in reserve in case you'd ever get into financial trouble. Once you hit that 50% mark, anything in excess of that can be transferred to your Capital Projects Fund, and it's called a pay as you go transfer, and you can use those funds to pay for capital projects. So that number has increased substantially looking into next year. Normally, it's in the maybe 100 to $300,000 range, and that just reflects that the district now has some bonds falling off. And when we were initially looking at bonding for $20 million, that's, that's why we could bond for $20 million, because the, the, as we had bond payments falling off, it created some more capacity for us. So that just, I, I'm not putting it there to, I, I don't have in this budget any intent to use those funds for pay as you go projects. It's more just to show you kind of the availability of funds, this kind of shows that capacity to, to bond again if we desire. So we did bond for $11 million back in December, and that will, that's going to help us pay for the Eagle Valley projects amongst others, that's the most notable. And we do have the availability to bond for another $9 million at this point, if the district would choose to. I always kind of make the note that this is truly a living document, so it is likely every time you see it, it's going to change, but we have the opportunity to change it at, at any point we like, even if it's not a, a budget being proposed. We can always bring up the capital improvement plan for your consideration if we decided to suggest changing something. And that is about all I have to say, and I'm hoping that the amazing Mr. Mark Kornick is on, Mr. Kornick?
I am here.
Outstanding.
Hello?
Thank, we hear you, Mark.
You got me? Okay.
Yep. Mark, would you care to take us through some of these items that we're looking at in fiscal year 2021, or maybe that cross into 2022, some of the, and, and just talk in a little detail about some of them for us?
Absolutely. President Walker and School Board Trustees, executive staff, thank you for having my voice with you tonight. I don't know about a presentation, I don't have a presentation, but I can talk you through this, and we can discuss whatever you need to, to hear about. We do have a few projects right now that we're finishing up on this year's that are notable. Carson High School Restrooms, all the public restrooms are being remodeled. We did most of the tear out ourselves, and we're finishing that with new sinks, tile, refurbishing, painting, mirrors, those kind of things, some fixtures and air dryers for drying hands. We're also doing some of that at Pioneer High School with their old restroom in the old building, as well as PDC. And we are also finishing up the last phase of Seelager's remodel. As you may remember, when Fremont was, the addition was added on, we moved CLS program from Seelager over to Fremont. we moved CLS program from Seelager over to Fremont. And we remodeled two classrooms at that time. And this year, we're removing restroom from the CLS and remodeling two more classrooms, finishing up that project, also doing a bathroom remodel at the main entrance there. For this coming year, we have asphalt roofing projects every year. So we have various schools, and we have some projects going on right now that are going to roll in right now is from this fiscal year. So they're going to roll right into next year, and we'll be probably using all of that money up with improvements. Same goes for our refresh line item. We're doing a couple wings of classrooms of carpet right now, which is last year's funding, or the current year. And this coming year, we'll continue to do some more carpeting upgrades, paint, those kind of things, which we call refresh. I will move right past the Snyder project. I know that's still on the table, and there's discussion there for another day. Boardwick has a nice project coming up to refresh the restrooms outside the multipurpose room. Those will be demoed, and new partitions, flooring upgrades, countertop sinks, those kind of things, as well as a new roof on the multipurpose room. It's a metal roof, so we're in discussions with structural right now. Carson High School has, for this year, replacement of the football turf. We're past year twelve on that. And generally, they say ten years is, well, they did say ten years. Now they're saying more like twelve to fourteen, because it's not the same. It's not the same product anymore. There's many different companies and many different kind of turf out there that is used for high school stadiums, college stadiums, et cetera. We've been to UNR to see their turf. We've been to Minogue, Damone Ranch, just got a new turf field. So our process with that would be to hire a consultant to help us with the scope and creating specifications, so we could go out for an RFP for the turf and, RFP for the turf and for the installation. We'd like to do an add, go ahead.
Stacy and I sat through a training on this, and maybe she would be willing to consult for free. Just a suggestion.
That would be lovely, I'd appreciate that. I do have, I have been talking with a couple of the project managers in Washoe since they've done this recently, and they're more than willing to share documents and talk about their process. We'd like to do an add alternate to that RFP to try to get some track resurfacing done and possibly painting there. We do need a couple pieces of equipment as well. HVAC upgrade, old air handlers at Carson High, some original. So we have some money in there to kind of upgrade some of that. And then Eagle Valley, this is the project A.J. mentioned earlier, that is mainly, is the majority of the bond that we have now is going toward that project. And we have met with the architect, who was the original architect on that school and the last remodel on that school, Van Werpe Bogoti. We've met with them, the school team, our team, and talked about what the needs are. And basically says nine to ten classrooms, but we're looking at a STEM lab, some HVAC upgrades, possibly some parking. You guys had met Core Construction, I think, at the last meeting. They were the winners of our RFP for that project. We have a pre-construction contract in place with them, and we'll be having a kickoff with them very soon, probably next week, to start the ball rolling. As we move down, Seelager going to have some work on the asphalt shingles around that building this year. And then the district office, we've been looking at this project, well, it's been fifteen years since Phase One was completed. So I should say the next phase is One A I have here. And we're going to go do a three-phase project there in that we'll have an add-on put onto the building that will house the educational services offices, and we'll complete some, the extension of the HVAC system that we have on the east side of the building in fiscal and IT. Phase two is a remodel of the old educational services area, which will house grants and ELL. And Phase three is more of a refresh, new front entry, storefront on the building, new door, carpeting, some roof improvements to the older building, landscaping, et cetera. We're going to do these in three phases, so that we can also do those that add alternates. If funding gets a little tight, we may be able to put off the refresh and do part of that ourselves and contract, or contract that out later when more funding's available. And that's basically it. We have a roof replacement at the operations center. Half of that roof is getting replaced this year. And things that'll roll over, Eagle Valley's going to roll over into the next year, obviously. And that's about it for now. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Go ahead, Richard.
Crickets.
No, Mark, this is Richard.
We're just coordinating, they're spread out, Mark.
I do have a question. Mark, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, on the Boardwick Bray improvements, I see you have lists on there, a portable. Does that mean as part of that money, that portable that's been there for numerous years is going to be removed finally?
Yes, indeed, that is going to be removed.
So I would just add, Mr. Varner, one of the things that we need to keep in mind in our planning with kind of the post, or not post, but the COVID world, is additional space in case we would need to provide places for students if they would fall ill. And so this is one of the many logistical things. I mean, nothing has been decided, but one of the things that we have to think about is all the possible additional space we have. So while it...
Yeah, I don't know if I'd put anybody in that building or not.
I spent a year teaching.
So I just wanted to make you aware, just in case you would hear of us, you know, in the end deciding we have to do something different. I realize, we all realize what terrible shape it's in, believe me. We've been talking about it for a long time. But it's just kind of an interesting concern now that we have with kind of the, maybe what the new reality is when we have kids back in school.
If you drive by and it's still there, it might, it might be white.
Just close your eyes, Stacy.
One other quick question. On the Eagle Valley, is there any more discussions about the traffic issues that have been brought up by the public? About how to maybe resolve those or increase the traffic flow?
Mark, do you?
No, there hasn't, there hasn't at this point. There will be a traffic study done in this process, in the pre-construction process. So we'll be coming to you with that information a couple months down the road. And there's been a lot of discussion amongst us, but no formal study done yet or solutions.
Well, and I think that part of that would probably be a discussion when we meet with the supervisors. Part of it is out of our jurisdiction.
Sure, that is true, and there isn't a lot of choice there. If there's a way that we could delay the traffic through our property somehow, that might be one of the choices, but that's not really my area of expertise, but we will definitely look into it.
Stacy?
Mark, this is Stacy. For the Eagle Valley, so you're saying the total for those construction will be eight point two million total?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the admin building, I think we're all sitting here thinking that's not going to happen, because it hasn't happened ever. But is that three phases, is that a total of a million dollars?
Total would be a million dollars, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Joe?
A.J., just for everybody's education or refresher, I think everybody here knows, as far as bond dollars and our different pots of money, questions keep coming up, why can we do this but not this? And I think it's important to remind people that while we have this bond money in place, it can only be used for specific purposes. Maybe you can touch a little bit on that, and also on capital improvement funding?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Trustee Cassioppo. Yeah, again, the funds that are represented on this capital improvement sheet, the dollars represented here come from two different funds. One is the district's bond fund, which houses proceeds for bond-funded capital projects. And then you have the capital projects fund, which is funded with some government services tax revenue that we are allowed to use for, we are supposed to use on capital projects. So any funds with, any monies within those two specific funds, their sole purpose in life is to be used on capital projects. They don't have the ability to be used on anything else. That's just, that's how it is, statutorily, that's how we have to use those funds.
A.J., just a quick question on the government service tax revenue. Is there any concern that the estimate of what we'll get for next year will go down, or is that still not known?
Thank you, no, thank you, Trustee Crossman. That's actually a really, a good question. And you'll know, so the answer is yes, and clearly, yes. I will say that I didn't adjust the revenue stream for this one in particular, only because if you, when you're looking at that very top orange line, and then you go down two more, and it says the beginning fund balance for application, the fund balance is rather healthy there. So if we would see a decline, we would be able to cover it. And two, we have a great deal of flexibility with these projects. Again, we can come back to you at any time and change it. We don't have that same kind of flexibility with most of our funds, yeah. But no, that's a good question, and that, when we get into the other presentation, I'll talk about that within the general fund.
All right, do we have, this is an item for possible action, so entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the revised capital improvement plan and the opening balance fund three hundred capital projects for fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Richard, a second by Laurel. Any further discussion by the board? Any public comment for item nine?
Showing no public comment online.
All right, so I'll call a question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on the final budget, including adjustments to the tentative budget for the Carson City School District for fiscal year 2020, 2021, including adoption of a resolution approving the final budget in transmittal letter. This is for possible action. Mr. Feeling?
Thank you, President Walker. I'd like to start this discussion again, and kind of, based on Trustee Varner's question, because I just, I think this is really, it's really important to the discussion tonight and to understand that I'm going to be talking about two things. And while they are related, they are not both represented in the budget that you are discussing tonight, for the most part. You have, I'm going to spend some time talking about what we are seeing with the impact of all this COVID mess, mostly at the state level, how it may impact us in the future, kind of everything we know, just so that, you know, I guess you're up to date more than anything else. And it's significant, for sure. Then you have, we'll get to part two, and we'll pause there, and we'll take a little time to talk about. And again, clearly, that, while we don't really know exact numbers, it clearly will impact fiscal year 21, so I think it's appropriate to talk about that item. In part two, we'll kind of get down to the traditional final budget presentation that I give with some pretty charts and graphs that I know Trustee Cassioppo enjoys and things like that. But clearly, a lot of heavy things in there to discuss as well. So I just, I just want to, and I might make that distinction with some of your questions during this time. So just, and again, please interrupt me at any time and ask questions. So, talking about COVID, and the impact on us and the state government. On May eleventh, Governor Sisalak declared a state of fiscal emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. One of the, I guess, one of the interesting pieces of this, or several, but he mentions that for this current year, they're projecting a seven hundred and forty-one to nine hundred and eleven million dollar loss in revenue for the state for this year that ends on June thirtieth, this fiscal year, which is just incredible considering how close we already are to the end of the year that they could be, that the projection would be off that bad. But again, it's due to COVID, not because of poor projections. But they very specifically, in this note, state, including a projected shortfall in the state distributive school account as well. So the fact that that is pointed out to me specifically, I think, says something in all this. So it's kind of like a warning shot to me, saying, look, you need to be aware of this, and what we're asking you to do to prepare, you need to be doing that. And I'll talk about what some of those things were. So just kind of overall, large scale for the state. So I've written a number of places that the expectation is that Nevada will be one of the hardest-hit states economically, and because of really the lack of a diversified economy, you're very dependent on gaming, very dependent on tourism. Forty, again, forty percent of all state revenues, one way or another, come from gaming. That's really, really significant, especially because gaming is bringing in zero revenue right now. The unemployment rate in the state in February 2020, I believe this was an all-time low of three point six percent. Since March fourteenth, four hundred and fifty-four thousand new unemployment claims have been filed in Nevada. That is more than the number of jobs lost during the entire Great Recession. So in two months, we've already lost more jobs than over a three-year period. April 2020, the unemployment rate, I saw some different numbers, but I had seen thirty, but the other number I saw, I think, was more accurate, was actually twenty-eight point two percent, although they are expecting it to increase. The highest unemployment rate before that was in 2010, and it was thirteen point seven percent. So more than double the highest reported unemployment in state history. So that is clearly concerning in the bigger scheme of things, if folks are not employed, and tax revenues coming into the state that not only are dependent on gaming and tourism, but also on folks spending money and otherwise contributing primarily through sales tax. The last piece is really ultimately my biggest concern, and has to do with the housing market. And what's interesting right now is how the housing market is steady. So as far as like property tax revenues, there really isn't a lot of concern with the property tax revenue stream. with the property tax revenue stream right now. The the problem becomes, though, that with, I'm sorry, I spelled foreclosure wrong, with foreclosures being delayed for sixty days, no one can be foreclosed on in sixty sixty days. And then forbearance, meaning you kind of have time where you don't have to pay if you set up a plan for up to a hundred and eighty days. Once that goes away, that I mean, that would hopefully mean the economy is is doing better. But with that level of unemployment, that that's just a bit worrying. If we if we can't get that back down quickly, that becomes a problem, because all of a sudden, you have a lot of folks who didn't have to go through foreclosure, didn't have to go through a forbearance, or did get the, you know, the benefit of that. And all of a sudden, they still don't have a job. So that that's just kind of looking forward is is a concern. And and maybe the feds would come through with something else to try to help those folks out. I feel like that's kind of the MO at this point. So we'll we'll see. So with the state of fiscal emergency, looking at the current year, again, the governor said the, excuse me, the revenue shortfall is expected to be between seven hundred and forty-one and nine hundred and eleven million dollars. The interim finance committee met, and they approved, and then the Board of Examiners approved access to the state's rainy day fund, which they pulled four hundred million dollars out of that, which is an enormous number. But given the size of the shortfall, it clearly is not enough to to cover all of that. The governor has asked state agencies for a four percent reduction in their budgets, which totals six hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in this, again, this current year that ends June thirtieth. So really had two months notice, basically, to try to cut four percent of their budgets with the fiscal year almost over, which is incredibly difficult. NDE, Department of Education, kind of in that vein, reached out to all school districts. And the the angle they took on it was to ask us to identify any grant funds that we did not have obligated in some way, that we could leave with the state instead of asking for reimbursement. So we went through that process ourselves, Carson City School District, we identified about six hundred thousand dollars that we could leave with the state. The the districts, actually, in general, they share this information. So most of them were between six hundred thousand and one million that was returned. So it was it was a significant, significant amount of money. And the larger the district, the more we believe they returned. So.
Question on that, because Washoe and Clark have such significantly higher budgets than the other counties. Is the six hundred thousand to a million an average? Or and and they're the outliers that we're not seeing? Or I'd hate to think that Washoe County did a four or Clark County did a four percent cut and came up with a million dollars. That.
Right. Yeah, no, agreed. So I it was not shared how much Clark County reverted. I know they reverted some. There was an article in the Review Journal that was talking about it, but I didn't see an actual number mentioned. Washoe, it was over three million dollars. So proportionally in the ballpark. Yeah. So also, then, the the CARES Act was passed at the federal level. And I'll talk a little bit more about what those funds look like for for the district and for the state, and how they can be used. The the concern I have, and this has happened in the past, and and this kind of goes back to trustee Cassioppo's question, talking about what savings maybe we're seeing this year from the remote learning and trying to, I mean, really, a pullback on spending quite a bit across the district, is that in special session, it is very possible that even even once the year is over, they could retroactively go back and change what your per pupil amount is. So we could actually end up owing money back to the state based on the amount of aid they have given us. I think more likely, because my understanding is that is not the desire. I think much more likely would just be a more severe reduction in the following year if it came to that, if there wasn't some other aid. So but that that's, you know, from the standpoint of you finish the year, you think you're in one place, and all of a sudden, you're not, because the state says you, you know, you have to pay back something. So it'll be interesting. Also impactful is, but unknown is, so we talked about the new funding model in fiscal year twenty-two, so not next year, the following year, the new model begins. And we very likely are going to be in this hold harmless state based on this year's revenue. Well, there was no foresight with SB five forty-three of of the COVID clause of whether your level of funding, if it gets reduced in this year, will that be then your new hold harmless amount? So I think a lot of it is going to depend on the state economy in the end. If if all of a sudden, the economy comes back booming, I don't know that it'll be much of an issue. But if it doesn't, then it might be really important for us. Looking at next year, and this was from a number of news articles we've read, and from the interim finance committee, too. So right now, they are projecting a shortfall in revenue between one and two billion dollars for next year. That is a really wide range, but both of them are really big numbers. And on a state budget, in a given year, the state budget is about four point four billion. So that is a twenty-two to forty-five percent loss in revenue for the state. If there is any CARES Act money, that would be if there's a balance after they plug holes for the current year, they potentially could roll that over and use that, which would be helpful. But besides reducing state budgets, or some new state tax, which seems crazy in a time like this, additional federal intervention is probably the best opportunity to to help plug those holes. So the governor has asked all agencies to prepare for between six and fourteen percent cuts for perspective. And again, this gets back to like how important it is to think of this as kind of worst case, like this is part one of the discussion. A fourteen percent cut would be a reduction of eleven hundred dollars per pupil, or about nine million dollars. During the worst of the Great Recession reductions, we lost two hundred and twenty-nine dollars per pupil. And that's a that's a lot. That's a huge impact. But fortunately, was an impact that, to some extent, through good planning, people saw it coming, and really thoughtful decisions were made. And unfortunately, we didn't have the luxury of time with with some of this. So or the luxury of a booming economy. While it's been good, it wasn't quite like it was back then. I have a slide on that later. So just, again, the magnitude of this is significant. Contingency planning is in process. So we, knowing what the governor has requested, we have actively been looking at worst case scenarios. And this trustee Varner was a little bit to your to your concern about the the twenty-seven to one. And and this is not, this is not limited. I mean, when you're when you're talking about a number like nine million dollars in a budget of like sixty-five, that is, you're not going to look in one place, right? I mean, the it's it would be much more significant than that. So that that is one of the things that has been a part of those discussions for kind of worst case planning. But it but it's, again, it is not the budget being presented tonight. So that just it's really important that folks understand that. Contingency planning through this is enormously complicated, because we don't even know what school looks like next year. So it it just adds to adds to the dialogue, I guess we'll say. But clearly, it's a it's a serious topic, and it's a seriously complicated topic to go through. So but that is something we are actively doing for all this. In the interim finance committee meeting was really interesting. And just to relay a couple important points from there. So and I think I discussed this in the last time we talked about some of these impacts. So so the information from Department of Taxation about revenues collected is always very delayed. It's delayed by about two months. So it it will not be until really now this last week of May, that they are getting information from what happened at the end of March, when all the shutdowns really were first starting those two weeks. They will not have information for what happened in April until the end of June. So for planning purposes and timing purposes, this is awful, right? I mean, it would be nice to have this information kind of in real time to really see what's happening. I mean, for the state, I think they they will have to say, I mean, really dependent on school districts, like given a school district timeline, we are going to have to look at these March numbers that we're getting here at the end of May, do some basic projections, and make some decision whether or not you're going to do a special session, because just given the timing of how that would have to come together, they will probably have more information than going into June. But clearly, the earliest this all would happen, the better. Or the the decision not to have a special session, which I would be ecstatic about if they were just going to fully fund it some way somehow. But the sooner we have that information, the the better. And that is one of the huge problems we are all battling with in communicating some of this information. So the in another interesting point.
Wouldn't it be safe to say that we know it's coming in the end of June, but with no gaming, no hotels in operation? I mean, we're looking at sales tax, which I think most of us would agree, we have spent much less while we've all been quarantined at home. I mean, it's going to be real close to nothing.
So so that's that's a really good point. I mean, I the the magnitude of the change in what has happened is it's hard to wrap your head around, because it's so significant. For a state like Nevada, to say the casinos are closed for two months, I mean, that that does, that'll never happen. Well, it happened, right? So, you know, the the state was not prepared for something like that. The casinos weren't prepared. They didn't have locks on their doors, right? They they don't have locks on doors in casinos. So right, right. So again, yeah, and and really kind of to that point. So the one revenue that the fiscal analyst for LCB said, there's there is only one revenue I can give you any information on. And it's the gaming percentage fee tax. I have a little slide after this to show you. It's the second largest revenue generator for the state. It generates almost, it's like eighteen to twenty percent of all the revenue for the state. Up until the end of April, it had generated six hundred and twenty million. They were had projected for the year about seven hundred and eighty. And he said, we know it's zero, because there's no gaming going on. It is absolutely zero. So there will be a one hundred and sixty million dollar loss just on that one revenue stream, because casinos are not open. So again, but there was nothing else that was kind of that clear cut to talk through, or for examples. So this is kind of hard to see. But this is from the Fiscal Appropriations Report. So at the end of every legislative session, there's a really large report that comes out that kind of talks through all the numbers of what happened during the session. And this is just their general fund revenue forecast that they use. If you've ever heard of the Economic Forum, in in May of legislative years, they they come out with kind of their forecast for revenue. And so this large purple chunk at the bottom is that gaming percentage fee that, again, is the second largest revenue stream for the state. The the big blue one is state sales tax. And President Walker, or trustee Wilkie, you know, just mentioning, folks are not spending a whole lot of money right now, right? So that's a significant chunk as well. And I'll show you a little bit how that money gets used. And again, it kind of just weighs the impact of some of this. So the the committee, the committee meeting, again, for the current year, the governor requested a four percent cut. All of the agencies and school districts have responded to that. The governor's office is currently still going through all those. I'm sure it's an incredible amount to to deal with. And the Budget Director for the governor did make mention of basically the thought that there, you know, possibly could be a special session, something like that. But it was said kind of in an offhandish way. But again, just the fact that it was mentioned makes me think that they're very much talking about it. Otherwise, I think they would probably not say those words. Oh, this is really small.
And I know I've heard the figure before. What is a typical special session cost a state?
So that's a good question. And I I actually was looking at the some of the reports from the last special sessions. So it it depends, to some extent, on the number of days. Most of the special sessions are literally one or two days, and it's over. The one during the recession in twenty-ten was a week. That was the longest one that I could find. And they do label in there what it costs. They have to make a special appropriation during it. And I I don't know. But what's interesting is, you know, given the world we're in, that session isn't going to happen in Carson City, right? It's all going to be virtual. So maybe that'll help with some of the costs, you know, I don't know. But but there may be some technology costs that come on, because they've never had to deal with this before. The interim finance committee meeting was all like a Zoom type meeting. I they use something called life-size, I think, for the state. So yeah, it's it's going to be different in a number of ways. But yeah, clearly, there's a cost to to the taxpayers to make that happen as well. This, I apologize, I I took this out of that fiscal report, too. It's fairly small. The the point to this is that you have two line items in the states. These are the large general categories of the state's budget. You have K-12 education, and you have N-CHE, kind of the university system, junior college system, right here. Those two items, in 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 the world of politicians, they just represent education. Fifty percent of the state's budget is education every year. The only other item that's even close, and it actually has grown a lot in in the last decade, is health and human services. That's thirty-three percent. So between education and health and human services, eighty-five percent of the state budget is eaten up. And and this is where my concern is, where, you know, it's not like the state has a lot of great opportunities, especially with COVID going on. And you probably don't want to eliminate health and human services during that time. They don't have a lot of places to pick from to plug holes. So it just, again, it just complicates things with kind of that that ability that states often are good at. I don't know that we have such flexibility here.
I think Don has a question.
Just a quick question, just a, when you're talking about the unemployment benefits, is that all federally funded? Or does the state have to eat some of that?
So so state or or like in our case, we we pay for them. We pay like into an insurance pool for them to get paid out. But now, what the feds have done with the CARES Act, and there may be more to come, is that they're basically reimbursing the states for some of those unemployment costs, up to a certain amount, and actually going above, kind of above and beyond, I think, what some of the traditional payments are. So I I would expect, I forget how long that carries on for, but I would expect that it'll probably get, unless the unemployment rate really starts to come down, they'll probably keep renewing that. At well, at least a little bit. I don't know. But I think it's considered at least. Okay, so the the CARES Act that was passed, and I know Mr. Soaks shared some of this information with you. So the state from the feds received about one point two five billion dollars. And I think hearing that number, a lot of people thought, you know, this is great, this is a lot of money. It is going to take care of things. Well, during this interim finance committee meeting, they they talked about how that money is going to be allocated. So one hundred and nineteen million is a set aside for the city of Las Vegas, two hundred and ninety-five million is a set aside for Clark County, one hundred and five million is a set aside for schools. Of that, NDE takes a portion. And then what's left is eight hundred and thirty-six million. That eight hundred and thirty-six million, no, no one in the top three pieces of that list, city of Las Vegas, Clark County, other schools, can touch that eight hundred and thirty-six million. That is fully supposed to go to other municipalities, local governments, state government agencies in the state. What's interesting, though, is that there's kind of an interplay between K-12 education and the state budget. So I don't know if maybe there would be some way they could try to to get some more money towards helping the schools, even by just supporting the state side of what they put into schools. But as of right, the the way it was explained during this meeting is that 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 is not meant for any of those other, those first three categories at all. But going to other local governments and county governments across the state. So we are receiving one million dollars of that. The the good thing is that we're receiving a million dollars. The bad thing is, we don't know how bad the down, the other side of that is, that we got a million. But if we lose nine, right, it's not the best offset. But I'll I'll take a million dollars anytime. And one other note of that is, there's a portion of that, a very small portion, that is supposed to go to private schools in town. So like St. Teresa's, Montessori, Bethlehem Lutheran, all, I think, get a portion of that. So additional federal funds, the US Office of So additional federal funds, the US Office of Representatives approved a $3 trillion aid package, the HEROES Act. That is now in the Senate. Of that, $1 trillion would go to state and local governments across the nation. It is crazy to me to hear the word trillion thrown around like candy in a lot of these discussions. And I went through this exercise to, to wrap my head around a trillion. So just to kind of help with this, if you found a genie's lamp and you rubbed the lamp and you got three wishes, and you wished to travel time and go back to the birth of Christ, and two, be immortal, and three, receive $1.5 million per day, you would arrive today in 2020 because you're immortal, and you've been around for 2020 years, and you would be a trillionaire. That's how long, that, that's how big that is. And it, you know, I don't even know if that, that's just hard to conceive of anyway. So, but it's still just, it's so much money. Or you can ask Jeff, you can clone Jeff Bezos from Amazon three more times and then you'd have to be a trillionaire, so. So anyway, the US Senate is now considering this HEROES Act. I fully expect it will get whittled down quite a bit. It's very political, which I know is a shock in Washington. But we will see the outcome of that. But that is something very much to keep your eye on, that, that is really important right now. So the only adjustment, and this gets back to Trustee Crossman's question before about the government services tax, very astutely a concern with, with all of this. So it, it's a reasonably large chunk of revenue for the general fund. It's not, definitely not the largest. And the April payment was down about 60% from what we had received in the month before, month prior. Now, that, that is not the whole story with that, though. That's a huge drop. But because the DMV is not very accessible right now, they can't receive a lot of these payments. So I, I think it's reasonable to say that it will take a hit. It, it did in, during the recession. But I, I don't think to say, oh, because it went down 60%, we should, you know, cut it in half. I don't, I don't think that's what's, what's happening here. So that, that is the only thing from all of this COVID discussion that is reflected in the budget that you're considering tonight for approval. Again, nothing else that, that you've heard comments about, nothing else is, is there about anything that was like new information at least. So do you have any, any questions?
Just a question on that, just to, because you didn't mention it, but it's, so you estimated not the 60% decrease, but the 10%, a 10% decrease? Is that what the notes are saying, 250,000?
Correct, yeah. I, I felt like it had to be recognized in some way because I think it's real. But clearly, we don't know, and, but I don't think it's going to be that bad. I, I just, there's, there's no way. There's just no way it'll be that bad.
Go ahead, Richard.
AJ, due to the money we had to give back on the grants, did that result in some reductions in staff?
That did not. So one of the things the state made very clear was that it, it would not be money that is tied to positions. So any person that was currently grant funded, they, they're, they are funded through the rest of the year. It was really, because, because of the timing of grants, and I think we've had these discussions before, the timing is awful in hiring people. You know, once the school year starts is really difficult. And there's a lot of times where we can't find people or we find them later in the year. So there will be some salary savings because of that. And it was those types of dollars. Or like if there were maybe supplies or, or travel or something like that, that just couldn't happen anymore. That they just wanted everything back that they could. And I, I think, I don't know, but I think the goal was, at least for NDE, they, they wanted to find every dollar they could without it going back to impact the DSA and getting into the per pupil and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, it, it made sense in, in those terms because that, that impact becomes much larger and impacts many more people if, if that's the case. So hopefully, we'll find out soon what the, kind of the bottom line of that is.
So you have any indication that it may affect staffing for this, next year?
So, we don't. I mean, there, there hasn't been any direct contact regarding that, any communication regarding that. In, in the bigger scheme of things, when you, you have the, the large pot of DSA, that's kind of the base funding for everything that happens, I, I would think the state would, if they, the state would have to make cuts, they would very much want to protect that as much as possible and, and, you know, maybe look at grants. I mean, the, the reality is that, I think, one point, it's like 1.2 or 1.3 billion dollars goes from the state into the DSA, and they spend about $100 million on grants. It's actually, it's more than that. But, I mean, you know, it's, if the, as long as the holes aren't too big in the DSA, maybe they can find other ways to plug it. But if they're really big, then they're, they're probably going to have to look at some of those programs. I don't know if they'll, they'll have a choice, so. Okay, well, then I'll move into part two then. I'm sorry this is taking so long. I just, I thought it was really important and I know there was a lot of concern. And, you know, you, you've been hearing a lot of things. So just, just to kind of walk through that, you understand the impact and just the idea that it's these, these two different things we're talking about. So this that now gets into the budget itself. And again, very similar to the tentative budget that you were presented, it still has a, it's still a balanced budget, even with the, the funding reduction on GST. So that, that's a good thing. And I'll, I'll, you'll see more of, obviously, as we go along, so. Just some of the, the basics, the district always wants to maintain an 8.3% minimum fund balance. And this clearly, we're, we're there with this. The per pupil guarantee went from 7184 to 7308, as it was officially just recently changed. So that's the final number we're working with. Staffing costs, so it includes step and column movement at this time. Excuse me, all the percentage increases for the salary schedules are all included in here. Insurance costs, we have going up at 10%. Meeting required staffing ratios, specifically at the elementary level. All, all the changes that are within this budget are ones that were already presented as a part of the tentative budget. Reduced level of attrition noted. So a minor adjustment, one of the things that Dr. Delphin has brought to our attention is that the, the number of retirements and, and folks leaving the district is not kind of where it has been in prior years. I don't know if that's a reflection of the economy or just kind of where people are in their lives, but that, that just, it, it's, it's happening. And, you know, I always try to, to budget something, some of that, but just not to the level that we've seen in the last number of years. So just made some slight adjustments because of that. Nonstaffing.
Mr. Fueeling, this is Jose Delphin.
Hey, Jose.
Hey, yes, thanks for covering that. Trustees and executive staff, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Fueeling said. We're about half of what we typically do with attrition this time of year. So typically, we're, we're closing in on about 100 people throughout our staff, from admin to classified, certified, what have you. We're about half of that number so far. So my theory is that people are staying in place and not moving around for various reasons. And I want to say there's some hiring freezes across the nation as well. So what I thought we would be able to do with attrition and be able to move people around isn't happening as widely as I thought it would be. So I, I just wanted to support what Mr. Fueeling just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. For, for non-staffing costs, the COPS in schools program continues. But again, technology replacement, we, we don't have purchases scheduled for this year. We're able to use this year's funds to try to backfill where we, where we needed to at this time for, specifically for Chromebook replacement. So in determining revenues, are incredibly dependent on enrollment. And you look at trends over year to year and kind of throughout the year, although it took a very conservative approach this year really, and actually just have flat enrollment at this time. For specialized funding, I'm assuming a $200,000 increase, which is pretty much in line with, with prior years, kind of year to year. That seems to be about what we, we receive, but we don't know the actual number yet. Adult Ed and Prison Ed have, and they're as flat funded. They're, we just haven't received any information on that. For nutrition fund, we don't know our reimbursement rates from the feds for next year, but we do have the $280,000 guarantee, so I have, I've input that into the budget. Class size reduction as well is, is estimated. We, we know how the formula works, but it, it's not always perfect for, for some reason. For average daily enrollment, and, and these are the numbers we used from last year as well, count day headcount of about 77, 87 for total kids. Weighted average daily enrollment, which is, that's the number how we get funded at 7740.1. I will say that this year, that was the projection for this year. It, it looks like we'll come in closer to about 7715. So if you think of it in those terms, it actually is a slight increase in enrollment for next year. So we'll, kind of see where, where that goes, but. Yeah, I don't know. That does not include pre-K students if they do not have an IEP. So meaning they qualify for special education services. For, for pre-K students that qualify for special education services, they are a part of the weighted enrollment for funding. If they do not qualify, we do not receive funding through this mechanism, through the DSA. But there is grant funding that helps pay for some of those costs. So when you look at average daily enrollment, it's, it's looking at the entire year. We have to report on a quarterly basis. And so this kind of represents the history back in 2016, 17 to the far left. We, we didn't have that big of a jump. That was when kindergartners became real human beings and they went from 0.6 to 1.0 in their waiting. So that made a significant impact. And that's where the, the jump happened. This is the last 20-plus years of weighted enrollment. And you can see the, the roller coaster. You have 2003 is still the high point for the district of around 8,300 kids. And we, you know, the impact of the, leading up to the recession and the recession was significant, but has stabilized and generally been on an upward trend. It'll be interesting to see if there's any impact from what's happening right now with that. But at this point, again, just keeping enrollment flat going forward. This is a really messy screen. This basically just shows you how the DSA gets calculated. I'm, I'm going to skip it because it's, I, I can have that conversation with you after, if you want to walk through it. This is my favorite slide that I have. It, it shows the historical tax rates for the school district within Carson City. So the blue represent, this goes back to 1974, thank you. The, the blue represents the operating rate. So this is how much of the property tax goes into like the general fund budget. The red represents the debt rate, so how much we were levying to pay off our bonds at that time. And so you have, you get to 1979, 1980, and you have the taxpayers' revolution during that time across the western states. And the operating rate drops significantly. And so the state realized that they couldn't actually afford to run education if it was that low. So they, they brought it back up a ways, but still half of what it used to be. So significantly less property tax being paid on a percentage basis as opposed to back in the 1970s. This is the historical assessed valuation. This is a new, a new slide that I added because I just, I finally got the information together. But the assessed valuations within Carson City, so you can see running up to the, the Great Recession, the giant increase you had in assessed valuation. And we still are not back to that point with the total city valuation was. So that was kind of interesting. So then, when you start looking at just all the, the different funding sources, this shows you all, all the funds that we have, all the governmental funds. And the general fund is the big one. That's where most of the revenues come into the district. And the rest really pale in comparison. But what, what's interesting is you, you look at this and it's about 66% of all of our revenues. But going to the next screen, it will show you the expenditures. And so you'll see that the expenditures actually decreased quite a bit because what ends up happening is a lot of those funds are transferred out to other funds to be spent. So it just kind of gives you an idea of the impact of the general fund from what you receive to what you can actually spend within that fund. The costs of the district, not, not counting transfers of funds. And if you're looking at all funds except for the bond fund, because the bond fund kind of skews things because it's so large and it's only spent on supplies and services. But overall, we spend about 79% of our costs on, on staffing and then about 20, 21% on services and supplies. So then specifically looking at the general fund, this year, the, the local source of revenue continues to grow as, as local wealth property tax and local school support taxes was expected to grow. And the portion of state aid shrinks then. It's, it's always a seesaw as you locally become wealthier, the state gives you less and less to, to balance that out. I think when I started here back in 2014, that local percentage was 48% because they were actually really close. So the economy definitely had been improving for quite some time. This shows you general fund revenues, history going back to 2008. So you can see that while we took a hit, it generally has started to increase. However, when you look at 2008 compared to 21, that increase over time is, is basically compounding at 0.88%. So the, the increase in revenues since 2008 on an annual basis has averaged about 0.88%. And I've, I've given you information like that before, but I always like to throw that back in again. Just noted in yellow for fiscal year 20, that is the proposed hold harmless level for fiscal years '22, probably through '25, '26. So that would be the revenue that we would have in our general fund held flat, regardless of the number of students in the district. Within the general fund expenditures by object area, so when you consider transfers as a part of that, it's about 76% of our staffing, or 76% of our costs are staff in the, in the general fund. This slide, I'm going to have to start pairing down some of these because they're getting really, I'm adding too many years. It shows you, so if you look at the total budget in a given year as 100% of itself, what percent in the blue of that is wages? So that's the blue part. What percent is benefits? That's the red part. What percent is services and supplies? That's the purple part. What percent is transfers? And that's the green. And it's just interesting to see kind of the shift over time where back 20 years ago, you, you had about 16% of your total general fund cost was benefits for employees. And now we're almost at 25% of our total general fund costs is benefits. But wages have clearly been impacted over time, right? That's kind of decreased, probably to kind of take that in exchange. One, two things that were of note really were, this is the, this year is the highest percentage year that, the highest percentage that benefits is taken of any year that we have information for. It's also the lowest for services and supplies. So over the last couple of years, reducing a lot of the curriculum and not buying a bus, and now not buying Chromebooks next year, like all these things are adding up. And so much more has gone into staffing costs than, than those costs. Expenditures by, by program. So it shows you kind of the different educational areas. The dark blue up here is just regular, kind of traditional education. But then you get into vocational, like CTE programming. into vocational, like CTE programming, ESL, alternative, all the different support areas, transportation, operations, your utility costs, all those are in this large pot. Athletics and like co-curricular activities, that's 1%. That's oftentimes a place to think to look, and it really just is a very small part of This is a comparison of, of last year's budgeted number with this year's. So again, overall, we've actually reduced expenditures, the budgeted amount of expenditures by about $1.2 million, but the bigger picture is reducing that deficit down to zero effectively. These are, and kind of starting this journey with the deficit reduction, we brought a budget to you for this current year, well, a little more than a year ago, and instead it was looking like it was, we're gonna have about a $5.7 million deficit. And, and the board asked us to bring back a budget that had, you know, no more than a $3 million deficit, and we did that. And then the expectation was that we'd come back with a balanced budget this year, and we did that. So just kind of in a, in some kind of summary fashion, tried to show all the things that have happened over the last, what happened going into this year and then what we're proposing to, to happen going into next year. The, yes, sir?
Back to the other slide, are the, did, I just don't remember, I'm not questioning it. Did we go up one para from 12 to 13, or was that kind of where we were? I'm just wondering if the, as a result of less people, say, retiring, if we had to increase something?
No, that's, it's a very good question. So for the clarification, so at, at Boardwalk Bray Elementary School, it's the only elementary that has five kindergarten teachers. Next year, they'll be going down to four in the kindergarten level. So, so really, that one is more due to kind of enrollment slash caseload. If there's not a kindergarten teacher, you wouldn't have a fifth kindergarten para. So that's where that extra one comes in. Otherwise, it's two across each school. That's a good question.
AJ, I'm just curious, have they been given layoff notices yet?
Looking at the opening fund balance, which I'll kind of just take a step back. Trustee Cassie Opus questioned before about, you know, looking at the year end and with, with pulling back and just the move to remote learning, how has that impacted things? So it, from a financial standpoint, it's been significantly, it, it really has made quite a difference. We had initially projected, or the, the budget that was approved, I believe, had like, it's kind of the true operational but deficit, it was like 1.9 million earlier in the year. I, I believed it was probably gonna come in around 1.2, 1.3, 1.4 in that range. And it, it appears now like it may come in closer to like half a million. So it's made a significant difference without, you know, gasoline costs for buses, just really kind of reining in spending altogether, just out of concern about what's coming. It really has made a significant difference. So I would expect that opening fund balance number will actually be better than that, but that's what was part of the amended budget, so that's why that, that number is here. It'll be interesting though, like going into next year, if, if we would have to continue for whatever reason, you know, will, will there be additional costs to make that happen? And that, you know, we're, we're having a lot of conversations now about those types of things and what, what would it take to do all these different things and different scenarios? So again, it's incredibly complicated because there's just so many kind of caveats to everything you discuss, but it's, some of that savings may have to be used to help facilitate some of these alternative ways to provide instruction in the future. So I do show that there is a deficit of $201,000. That reflects the exact amount of what we consider our carryforward. So if you remember, there's, the district has had this carryforward practice for over a decade where if a school or department does not spend its entire budget in a given year, it can carry some of that budget forward into a new year, up to, there's a limit of how much can be carried. But that, that just represents kind of that, some of that extra amount that they are allowed to start the year off with. So if you don't consider the carryforward purely from a structural basis, we, we have a balanced budget with what's presented tonight. Historical fund balance percentages, I just thought, you know, for considering some of the discussions, again, going into the recession, as, as we saw that coming, the district very intentionally started building fund balance to help get through some of the rough times. As kind of the years coming out of the recession, we're able to build it back a little bit. But again, I've spent it down, the last two years, we've, we've spent it down a little bit. This year, it'll be a bit more, but again, with a balanced budget next year, that appears to be flat at this time. As a part of this presentation, because you're approving the nutrition fund within all of the other funds, we have to notify you of prices for food for next year, for meals. This is not actually something we have control over because the, the feds have a tool that we have to use and we plug in kind of numbers compared to what they reimburse us at, and it, it basically just spits out new numbers for what the meal prices would have to be to, we have to increase them at a certain amount. We have to increase them at least as fast as the federal, the feds increase their reimbursement amounts. Otherwise, they think we're like trying to make money off the program. So that's kind of how that happens. So the, the difference at the elementary level goes up five cents, at the middle school level goes up 10 cents, the high school level goes up zero, but last year it went up 25 cents at the high school level. So kind of just spreads it out. There's no proposed changes in any of the, any of the other rates. That is all I have.
Don't be shy. Oh, I'm never shy, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, huh? I was wondering, on, the reason I ask about the layoff notices, I know that Boardwalk Bray has sent out at least two layoff notices for, I believe they're Title I positions, an EL aide, a para four, and a parent involvement facilitator. They've both given, been given layoff notices, and I'm wondering if there's reduction in the Title I funds for that reason, or?
I'm wondering, is it, is that specific to a certain person, or? I don't know if, it seems pretty specific to positions, I don't know if.
I, I could, I could speak in, in general terms. I don't know the specific situation, but there was, I'm, I'm certain Mrs. Dockery said that, I think there was a slight reduction in Title I funds for the district for this coming year. And, and also there can be changes in how, I mean, ultimately, the, how they're used is determined by the principals with kind of consulting with Mrs. Dockery. So that, that too, maybe, maybe there is a shift in how those funds were intended to be used, but I don't know the specific situation.
And I have more. Go ahead.
Sorry, Trustee Varner, this is Jose Delphin again. Yes, after discussing many staffing meetings with our principals, I know that year to year, we have funding changes in Title I and other grants that happen naturally irrespective of what's happening with the budget today. So those are unfortunate, unfortunately, natural things that happen from year to year, and they have nothing to do with, with tonight's budget presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And here again, I'll go ahead and make a comment that I think that we've all received a lot of information and concerns by not only staff members but public, is that it seems like for reductions this year and maybe the next year, we're starting at the bottom. And I think some of the concern is, is there going to be any mid-level or upper-level positions affected instead of just the paras, for lack of a better term?
So, so in, in the, the budget that's been presented, there, there are no, say, administrative positions that are represented there except for in student support services. So we are not hiring the assistant, assistant director of student support services position back, so Kristi Lennox filled that position. And as kind of a part of a cost-saving measure, we're not hiring that position. And, and that, so what's important about that is while that is a special education-funded position, special education is really funded out of the general fund because of this huge transfer we have to make. So that was kind of the, the one, the one administrative position of any of that, that was cut that I can think of. The, just gonna go back to.
I, I was just gonna point out, Trustee Varner, if you look at the budget cuts that were made the previous year, there's one, two, three, four, five, six full-time employees from HR, fiscal, ed services, safety and operations, nine full-time TOSSAs, and five full-time read by three, grade three. So 14 plus six, 20, there's 20 administrative-level full-time employees that were cut the previous year. I don't see a lot more room to cut at this point. So I think that, I, I think that needs to be reminded too.
Yeah, I think we've all received information or inquiries about the cuts that are being made, and, you know, I committed to the people that have been sending me information that I would bring it up and bring it to the attention of the administration of their concerns about the cuts.
I think that, you know, and obviously, I think we all get, have gotten the same information from a variety of people, and that was one of the discussion points I had with Mr. Stokes this afternoon, and just identifying, you know, I know that Mr. Stokes has been conservative over this past year as we're talking about balancing our budget and not filling positions and, you know, and I asked him to be prepared with some of what those positions are that haven't been filled. And I think that when we really look at the reality of what we're facing and this information that AJ just presented, there's no way that these cuts, they're gonna be felt. It's gonna change if, even a 6% cut, if that comes down from the state, it is going to drastically change what this school district looks like. And I don't think any of us have the answers of what that is going to look like. And I promise you, it's not gonna be, we have a district office full of administrators and nobody working in our schools. It's just, the reality is, there's so many, every year, we're forced to make budgetary decisions based on projections and our best guesses, and then the legislature or the state gives us, okay, here's what you really have. I think this is even worse than normal because we know what's coming down the road, or we've been told what's coming down the road.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I understand all that, but like I said, I did commit that I would bring it up. And one other thing, real quick to clarify, there's, I guess maybe it's a rumor then, that this next fiscal year, out of this budget, it's gonna be 27 to 1 in the classroom, and we discussed that, but I just wanted to make it clear that in this budget, that is not the case.
What, what you have said is exactly correct. So in this budget, does, this does not represent 27 to 1 at the elementary level?
Thank you.
AJ, thanks at the beginning of this. Well, one, thank you for exchanging emails with me today. I think that helps. I think what's confusing for me as well is we're approving this budget, we kind of knew what the budget, you know, what we agreed to a few months ago and whatnot, and then schools now are planning for reductions, if you will. And so when I looked at this on page five under total employee information, the very top line, I'll give you a chance to get there, it says FTE total employees, FTE classroom I don't know how, I didn't look through all the numbering, but it's like literally page And it shows under FTE classroom teachers fiscal year 630, 19, 428. It holds steady for this year, June 30th, and then it shows 630, 20, 21 at 422, so a reduction of six teachers. And the questions I had weren't so much from this document, but were, you know, where are we going? Because while this budget is different, we kind of know that, you know, things are gonna, things are gonna have to change pretty quick, and some schools have announced to their staff what the upcoming school year is gonna look like, and those were a reduction in teachers. And so the concern is, one, you know, why are we planning for that? And I'm saying this is what I'm being told. Why are we planning for that? Why are we planning for more crowded classrooms, if you will, higher ratios? And why are these cuts immediately coming out of the classroom? Those are really the concerns is, you know, when we say from, you know, at the bottom, it's really what's impacting the classroom, and isn't that the last place we should be cutting? So when I read those emails and I talk to some people, that's really what I'm hearing is, boy, you're hitting the classrooms right away because now with 13 less para pros, our teachers are gonna have, at that level are gonna have more to do with more students in the classroom, and history shows us that they're not gonna be asked to do any less. They're gonna be, they're still gonna have to do data assessments, self-evaluations, all that. And that's the concern I'm hearing is, you know, you know, why, why are we attacking the classroom is basically what I heard.
Sure. And I, I can understand that. I mean, these, these discussions have not been easy in, in any way, and, and, you know, you're, you're really trying to frame it as, this is worst case, right? And, and hoping that it is worst case. And the, the reality is, we're, even after just starting these discussions, I mean, if you're talking about $9 million in reductions, we're, we're nowhere close. So as much as those discussions have been tough, I mean, if, if you were looking at something like that, and, and these discussions are continuing on with departments now and trying to figure out what, what other things we could do there, and, and some of it's hard, you know, just even like my own fiscal department, I have, I have five people, and we, we lost someone last year, and my accountant Bill still can't, he's still struggling with trying to, you know, pick things up. I just, I push everything off on him, but, I'm just kidding, but, yeah, yeah. But no, I mean, the, these discussions are not gonna be easy. And, and I, I think again, that, that Heroes Act, this next kind of round of stimulus that may come through is, is incredibly important to, to keep focused on and, you know, for talking to your, your senators and representatives, if, if you feel that, that's something that you would support. I mean, I, I think it's something to reach out with. I think that's, if, if we're gonna stay some semblance of what we have now, that, that's gonna be really important to, to get there. But I, I, I understand the, the concern, and I would just say that while those discussions have started, they're, you know, started with a lot of the schools, they're, they're not over by any means. It's, it's gonna take a really difficult look at the whole district to get there.
And, and, no, I agree. When we talk about anything above and beyond what we're planning for in this budget, it's, honestly, it's catastrophic if it gets too high. And we'll somehow survive, but we'll survive looking entirely different than we look now. But you're, you know, I, I guess I want to thank you for, you know, explaining that early on, because when I looked at this, you know, that same page, and I looked at that reduction of six, it wasn't penciling out with what I was starting to hear from schools. And so that clarification that, you know, this is based on, you know, two separate issues at this point, related but separate, that helps me out quite a bit. But there, there is some concern, and while we, you know, we made the decision as a board to say, okay, we're gonna accept the fact that we're gonna lose some of these para professionals. For me, it's a hard pill to swallow because I think they are valuable in the classroom. And I think if their value is questioned for, and I'm not saying it is, but if it is questioned, I think that becomes a management issue that we gotta look at later, are we not using them or training them or bringing the right people in? But going forward, whether it's a very small amount or a large amount, yeah, I'm gonna wanna have some discussions as to, you know, how are we providing equity throughout the school district? But I thank you for everything you're doing. I mean, this is not easy, and like I jokingly said, but I wasn't joking, I'm happy not to be wearing your hat right now. So thanks for what you're doing. what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I think, and I don't know, would you mind clarifying? What do you mean by equity throughout the school district?
Um, making sure we're, and I know we will, but making sure we're careful and we're explaining ourselves well as to where any future cuts are gonna come from. I don't wanna, as we reduce the budget and we reduce staff, I wanna be careful we're not, to use somebody else's words, attacking the classroom, first of all.
I just wasn't sure. You know, equity is also aligned with, you know?
Yeah. No, I mean, across the board, if we're making a reduction in the classroom, are we also making reduction in support staff? And it's gonna be hard to decide where that all comes from. But, you know, I mentioned that years ago, that all of us are support staff. Really what's important is having a teacher work with students. Everybody else is trying to support that effort. And it's all important. And no one position beyond that is any more important than anything else. But I know that's a lot, that's a concern to people throughout the district. And not just people who are in danger of losing their positions, but other people are now advocating for them as well. So I just, I know we will be, but it seems like whatever decision we make, we may have to go above and beyond how we might present and explain that moving forward.
Well, and I think when I really look at kind of some of the projections and some of the scary things, I mean, I think we might be looking at protecting to keep teachers in those classrooms. You know, budget cuts that deep, we're going to be looking at, every child deserves a highly qualified teacher. How are we gonna make sure that happens? And everybody else is expandable. I mean, honestly, you need good teachers to provide education to these students. And I think that if these, if these budget cuts come to fruition, we're all gonna be sitting up here with some unhappy decisions. And I think that that's the real reality. I think right now, when you look at nice-to-haves and must-haves, you must have teachers in classrooms. It's nice to have parapros. You know, but I don't, like I said before, and I think that it's really important because I feel like in some people's mind, we're starting to pit positions against each other. And this isn't about us being dissatisfied or not respecting groups of employees or the work they're doing. This is truly us balancing a budget and responding to a crisis that is, that this entire world is dealing with right now. And what that's gonna look like, I think we're gonna have to support our employees as much as we can. But the bottom line is what services can we protect for our students? And that has to become number one. And I think that that's what some of the things that we're really gonna be grappling with. And how are we gonna support families that are afraid to send their kids to school? Is the district gonna be able to support digital learning for families? Or are we gonna, you know, allow those families to kind of be absorbed by online schooling? You know what I mean? We're gonna have to be quick on our feet, and we're gonna have to be focused on the needs of our community. And I think it's some real scary thoughts because whereas a lot of us thought these were coming in the future, I think reality is showing us they're coming in a month.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kind of the unfortunate set of circumstances we're all in, I think.
I, one more question, if you don't mind. Related to this, and I think this is appropriate to the topic, so correct me if I'm wrong. But when we talk about having to plan our budget now, and, and we're always having to plan this stuff ahead of when, what the state tells us we have to work with. Is this typical for most states from your experience? Or do we operate a little differently? Because this seems like a dysfunctional system.
Kind of silly, yeah. Clark County School District has worked really hard to try to get some of these timelines changed because they really just don't seem to, to make sense. But I, I don't think, nothing has really come of it. Um, I will say that, um, my experience in Wisconsin, I had to have my, what was called my tentative budget, um, uh, done before June thirtieth. And then I had to have my final budget done, um, by like October fifth or some, I mean, it was a little bit later. And like that, that made a little more sense to me. But e- even then, I remember complaining about it because I, I decided I was silly. Why are we doing this budget in June when I, we have no idea what next year is gonna look like? Really, we didn't know what our funding would look like. Um, so in the, in the defense of, um, yeah, you know, you have to have something, I think, going into a year, no matter how much you really don't know. Um, I, I think, I think it's more so just knowing that you're hopefully in the ballpark, right? I mean, hopefully you have some confidence that this number is reasonably close. I mean, ma- maybe it's, maybe it's five hundred thousand either way, but it's in that ballpark, hopefully closer than that. I hope it's not that far off. But, um, it's, uh, I have heard other states, um, at some conferences I've been at where, I mean, it's a, it's kind of a common complaint. It's, it's just this reality of, especially with, I think it's unique to education because of the hiring season, right? And, and just the school year and how those things flow. It just really complicates projecting. Um, and then states aren't always quick with getting you the information about how much revenue you have. And, um, so yeah, we're, we're not alone, but we're, we're still frustrated. And I will complain at every opportunity about that timeline.
And one of the things that makes Nevada part of it, especially with the, the Pacific region that we've been more involved in than any other states. But our legislature only meets once every two years. They only meet for sixty days. So, you know, you're talking about how do you plan that budget, doing it that way without a special session? I mean, Arizona's, they're in there for seven months out of the year. And Alaska, their budget was held up a couple times, but nothing like what we've done. And people just look at us like, how do you do that? But then you look at our revenue sources, and it's gaming, which is volatile. So, you know, that's part of the stuff that we have to deal with.
And I think as we look at going forward, and I think your point about communication, and I think that as we get clarification from the state and directives from NDE and kind of know which way we're headed, you know, it's gonna require that we have some, some board workshops, get some input from our stakeholders, and listen to what they have to say before we make those decisions. And I think that for everybody who's listening at home and emailing us and calling us and talking to us in the grocery stores, we get it, we're listening. And these are decisions that we're gonna make after we get input from everyone. And we'll provide that opportunity. But just, just know, none of us in this room have those answers. And if we did, we'd be doing things a lot differently. And I think we're all praying for more money. Laurel, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just to echo what Joe said, I don't think any of these cuts are something that are easy for us to swallow. I think as a board, it's hard for all of us. And I think that's why we've worked so hard to show how un, underfunded education in Nevada is. And so we're already working at, at that deficit, if you will. And then to have this pandemic come on and just devastated even more is, is, it's, it's really hard. And so I, I hope that everyone knows that we already know we're running bare bones. We're, we're doing well with what we're doing. But it's, it's not easy for anyone to, to look at what we have to cut and, and how that affects people.
And, you know, and I think the part that a lot of people don't see is there's three of us who are present in every one of those NASB meetings advocating for our district and our teachers and trying to get state changes. And, you know, that's kind of the behind-the-scenes stuff that we're all working on. Mr. Stokes is, uh, coordinating with the Association of Superintendents and doing the same type of work on his end. AJ is going to that interim finance committee and pounding tables and letting people know how underfunded our rural school districts are and providing services to other school districts to kind of help them with less resources. And I think that, I just want everybody to know in our community that it's not like we're just making these decisions, sitting up here and saying, okay, and going home. We're doing the work behind the scenes. We're advocating in front of the scenes. And, you know, we're, we're watching out for our community and doing the best we can. But we also need the support from all of us in this community. We need to be talking to our legislative leaders. We need to be talking to our congress, congressman for our district and our senators, and advocating for funding for education and kind of filling up some of these gaps in this unprecedented time. And I think we're seven small voices. But if the, the voters start talking to, to the people that they're employing, maybe some change will start to happen. Do we have any other discussion on this item?
No, I'd just like to say, Mike, I think you stated it very well. I think we want the employees to know that future budget cuts are gonna be looked at across the board. And I think that's one important thing, if people know that.
And I don't think there's any way to avoid that.
With the KinderPROs going, I think we have to be very transparent and very communicative with parents of how with the COVID, especially if we go back into the classrooms this next, um, year, how we're gonna deal with that with five-year-olds and only one person in the room.
And I think that stuff that we can't answer at this point because we just don't know.
I agree. But I think that's one of the major concerns. So I just wanna make sure that we are wide open with that, that we understand that's a concern. We will deal with it within the committee for one. But we will be very communicative and very transparent of exactly what it's gonna look like and for those, those parents that are scared to bring their kids back to school.
And that's a whole different discussion because that's looking at health guidelines and more guidance from the state. And I think that, yeah, the budget part is the discussion we're having right now. But I agree with you.
And I think after we've had homeschooling for, what, eight weeks, that I think there'll be a lot more parents down at the legislators telling them, we need more people, more prices. Yeah. You can tell who doesn't have children in school. But I think that it's made a big impact. I think people really do appreciate teachers a lot more. And I know that we appreciate their, their doings because they're putting in more hours now than they ever did when they were in the classroom. And the more individualizing learning that they've had to do during this pandemic is, is pretty amazing. And, and, um, I don't know how they do it, but I appreciate how they do. And, and hopefully, I think the public does too. And I think that will help us in the next legislative session.
And I've seen some amazing creative things that teachers are doing with their classes. And I think that when you get back to it, I mean, right now, a lot of adults are feeling inconvenienced. But there's a lot of scared kids at home. And their life just changed because school and play and sleep are pretty much the life of a kid. And so now it's home. No play, no school. So, I mean, I think that when you really think about it, the teachers taking the time to do these Zoom meetings and send home care packets to kids and all of the things they're doing to support the students is really vital because the mental health of these kids is gonna suffer as well because they truly don't understand what's happening. We're all scared at the implications of this pandemic. But we're at least adults and we could understand the implications. For a kid, they don't know. They don't understand. They can't hug their teacher. You know, one of the things, planning a celebration for kids finishing kindergarten, and it killed me having to put a statement in there about staff will not be able to hug, shake hands, or do these things with the students. Please talk about social distancing. We will give elbow bumps. You know, I mean, I've never had an elbow bump with a kindergartner. Because before I know it, I have five of them hanging from every limb I have. So I mean, you know, it's just the way it works. And so, yeah, we're gonna have to make sure that we're using, I mean, I think that's part of the importance of having a PIO officer. How else are we gonna share that information with families and make sure they know what we're gonna do and what we need them to kind of front-load with their kids before they come to school? And I think, just thoughts.
And I thi- I think it's interesting, Mike, too. I mean, right now, we're planning for, you know, kind of a downturn, if you will. And, you know, it's interesting how all this plays out. And I'm not trying to be funny, but I predict in four years, we're gonna see a bit of a boom in student population. A lot of people have been home for a long time. And, and so I think as we're winding down, we're gonna really quickly have to ramp back up. And so just, you know, we have to pay attention to that. Be an interesting graph for you.
Mr. Chairman?
AJ, watch those birth announcements.
Respectfully, it's a, a very good conversation, but I do think you guys are running a little away from the agenda.
So we have, uh, I think we've had healthy conversation. This is for possible action. And I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one by approving the resolution and transmit a letter and further instruct the Director of Fiscal Services to file the necessary documents to comply with chapter NRS, or excuse me, chapter, NRS chapter three five four.
All right. We have a motion by Richard, second by Stacy. Any further, um, discussion from the board? Seeing none, I know we have some public comment. Renee has some. Raymond, do we have anybody on the phone?
Showing no public comment online.
Thank you. Uh, Renee, would you like to read public comment?
So I have, um, a recent email from Loretta Marson asking if we could clarify that the top educators were put in grant funds. She remembers the presentation that Mrs. Fuson and Mr. Fueling presented that showed those people still have their jobs but are now funded through grants. So, the next comment is from Mary Foster. And she respectfully would like to say that as an employee at one of the elementary schools, I would like to see each of the board members and admin come and work at least one day, all day, in a kindergarten classroom. You would see the real value of the kindergarten paras. Since we cut down the number of students in pre-K, these are five-year-olds that need nurturing, especially for the first few months of all-day kindergarten. Maybe we could think twice before cutting from the bottom again. This comment, Mr. Walker, is from Carrie Finn, who's the president of the Class of, excuse me, Carson Educational Support Association. She's writing today because all of you have a tough decision to make regarding the possible elimination of the twelve kindergarten paraprofessionals district-wide. I'm pleading with you to please take some things into consideration before reaching your decision tonight. Kindergarten has changed so much over the years, not just with academics, but also with changing behaviors, inclusion in the classroom, not to mention our current pandemic situation. Currently, there's a reopening committee that SESA is a part of for the Carson City School District. With new guidelines set in place by the CDC, Health and Human Services, and the Nevada Department of Education for Schools to be up and running, I think it would be a big mistake to cut the KinderPARAS. Students will be required to wear masks, wash hands frequently, and practice social distancing while learning academics in the classroom, especially at lunchtime. Who will be there to ensure these precious four- and five-year-old students are doing these things to prevent illness and stay healthy if we eliminate the PARAS? We need more than one set of eyes on these students more than ever. And taking those extra eyes and hands out of the kindergarten classroom is very concerning for the parents and staff. The work that the PARAS perform is invaluable to the students and the teachers they support. We always hear the school district saying that we need to do what's best for our students. If the school district is serious about our kindergarten students' needs, then we should be looking at other areas to cut where the students will not be directly impacted. Let's not go backwards during this pandemic. Cutting the paraparapositions will not resolve the financial problem for the school district. It's a temporary fix that will create teacher burnout, less supervision for the student's safety, and more student problems which could potential, would, excuse me, which could be a potential liability for the district. I'm asking that you please look at this from a kindergarten parent's point of view. Would you feel that your five, four- or five-year-old is safe in the classroom with one set of eyes and hands, especially with our current state of emergency? Our next comment is, um, let's see, looks like Brittany Kane. I'm aware that cuts need to be made to the state budget due to COVID-19 and that some cuts need to be made to education. be made to the state budget due to COVID-19 and that some cuts need to be made to education. However, cutting budgets from the bottom up affects the students the most. Losing teaching positions, raising class sizes, losing aides make it less manageable with larger class sizes. Although a class of 17 to 22 for the last four years, I have seen tremendous growth with the students. Father, behavioral, and academically, I have been evaluated as highly effective for the last two years, and I know part of this is due to the size of class I was teaching. It was manageable for me to give the students a great amount of my attention. In California, I was teaching 24 to 28 kids for four years and did not see nearly the amount of academic, behavioral, or language growth that I've seen since working in Nevada. It is sad that students suffer the most when they do not have the attention and space they need to learn and grow. We should be, we should not be losing teaching positions. There has to be something else that can be done. This comment is from Dean Haley, Empire Elementary Resource K-2 teacher. As you sit down today to discuss the coming budgets, I would encourage you to think about those frontline workers who are in the, who are the face of the school district: teachers, paras, custodians, office managers, et cetera. These are the faces that children and families see on a daily basis. We are the ones that both students and family look to for their children's education, and we are already understaffed and underfunded. It's not hard to prove. Ask any teacher in ours or neighboring districts what problems they see on a daily basis. Most will tell you, too much to do with not enough time, not enough help, and not enough resources. It's no secret that teachers put much of their own money into their classrooms, and this is why. Yet, we talk about more budget cuts to come, and that means less bodies in the school building. Nevada is always on the bottom of the list in terms of education, yet we want to talk about cutting funding for those who are actually in a classroom educating. I once had an email conversation with one of the board members about the mass exodus out of teaching that I saw coming. I was told that teachers would not leave because they did not have the time or money for schooling to study new careers. Well, how's that working for you now? How about substitute teachers do we have available to us? Pardon me, how many substitute teachers do we have available to us? How many young people or people in general are coming into education as new teachers? How does that compare to the past? How many teachers are retiring in disgust because they simply had enough? Look at the recent reaction to our pandemic situation. Who made education continue? Teachers. Who wasn't, it wasn't the many heads of state in various districts or politicians or anyone else. It was teachers. Without teachers and those that assist teachers, education does not exist, and we fall further down the list. How far down that list does Nevada need to go before we start to really look at the value of our teachers and education? The next comment is from Ms. Marson, a Kinder Para Professional. She's writing on behalf of the paras that are being cut due to the budget. I know that this is a difficult decision for everyone, but I would like to state again, support staff is so important to students. We are in the classrooms, lunchrooms, recess duties, taking students to the nurse, some paras help during after-school programs. We consider ourselves in the trenches of education. We see these students and we make connections. That is a little different than the teachers. The district has spent time and money to educate us during PD days and early release days. I know money is tight, and you must decide where to cut. I do hope that when the district gets back on their feet, you will reinstate the Kinder Paras along with other support staff. We believe we are essential workers, and the district believes the same. Another comment is from Cheryl Lures, a Kinder, a Kindergarten Para Professional. I'm speaking from a different angle tonight, as you will see in a minute. I realize about the budget cuts and the deficit that it is, but I do not think all options have been carefully weighed. I think that you have only seen through the eyes of cutting the Kinder Paras. This is wrong. Let me guide you a little, a little on with the upcoming prediction of the second wave of COVID-19, the importance of paras, especially at this crucial time, especially as this time is crucial. Must be getting late. This is issued from the CDC for considerations for school reopenings, the highest risk, full-size, in-person classes, activities, and events. So here it is, and so here it is where it is recommended social distancing, such as space seating, desk at least six feet apart, which would mean maybe having 12 students, 12 children in the class at one time. When feasible, or install physical barriers such as sneeze guards and partitions, particularly in areas where it is difficult for individuals to remain at least six feet apart. Close communal use shared spaces, such as dining halls and playgrounds, with shared playground equipment if possible. Otherwise, stagger use and clean and disinfect between use. These are a few of the guidelines, yet to cut the paraprofessionals, people who are essential and have been there from the beginning with the children in their kindergarten classrooms, who have been there to clean, to hand out lunches, to make the packets, to do all that is asked of them whenever and beyond. We are needed. We are essential to the children's education, their bonding and emotional support with adults outside of their family, helping them and teaching them what school is all about, what life is all about. Other CDC guidelines include ensuring that student and staff groupings are as static as possible by having the same group of children stay with the same staff, all day for young children and as much as possible for older children. Limit mixing between groups if possible. Staggering arrival and drop-off times of locations by cohort, or put in place other protocols to limit contact. This could mean splitting the class in half. Some meet in the morning and go home in the afternoon, and then the afternoon children would come in. This would limit the contact. How can this be accomplished with two paras being divided between four classes and not mixing of other staff or children? I'm saying this as a para at risk of losing her job. I love what I do, and I am good at doing it, as are the other paras, I am sure. It is not okay to cut from the bottom because we do not have the seniority, because we have not been here long enough. I want to keep our jobs and continue with the school district and help the children to reach the stars. We are needed, especially by the children. I thank you as board members, as members of the school board also know how important our job is, as I have mentioned before, along with others. There are other ways in which to make cuts. I don't have all the answers, but consider this. If the second wave does come, and it will supposedly be bigger and worse, are you as the superintendent, board of directors, the curriculum coaches, ready to step in and be in all the classes to be paraprofessionals, to do all that we do and to help the teachers in what could be chaos? This email is from Alicia Blake, a paraprofessional at Empire Elementary. Dear members of the board, while we all understand that this pandemic has created unforeseeable, unavoidable consequences, I'm pleading with you to find a different way to balance the budget instead of making, making cuts that will affect our students the most. We have already lost our tutors and half of our kindergarten paras. We cannot afford to lose any more paraprofessionals. Our students cannot afford to lose any more paraprofessionals. These children will be returning to schools that are not how they remembered and schools that no longer have enough support for them because of budget cuts. I ask you to put yourself in the shoes of those students. You have been out of the traditional school setting for at least 157 days. You walk into an unfamiliar classroom, void of all the personal aspects your teacher used to, used to make it feel comfortable and bright in order to comply with social distancing guidelines. As you try to deal with all of the change in this unfamiliar place, you notice that the para is, that used to greet you every day at recess is gone. The para that helped you with your math or reading is missing, as well as the para that you spent every lunch within the cafeteria is no longer there to help you open sauce packets or ask you about your day. Now, your school days seem isolating and dreary. You counted on all those paras to be back at school, and you counted the days until you could see them again. And now it seems as if the schools are less bright and bubbled, staffed with a skeleton crew. If the answer to balancing the budget is to cut paraprofessionals, then the answer is wrong. The students will suffer. Teachers will be left with little support and more responsibilities, and the students will be left with overstressed teachers and less support. Teachers and admin cannot do the job of aides, duties, and tutors on the top of all the extra responsibilities they silently take on. Students cannot learn and grow as individuals without the love, encouragement, and support that paraprofessionals provide. This pandemic has caused so much loss, stress, pain, hardship, and trauma to all of us, including students already. Please do not add to that by taking away even more from the students. They will need all the love and support they can get when we return to school, and they will not get that if you decide to, to make the cuts that directly damage the students. This email is from Jennifer Blake, a paraprofessional, one at Empire Elementary. I'm presently in my 14th year of work, excuse me, in my 14th year working for the Carson City School District. I have worked as both a kindergarten paraprofessional and as a reading tutor. Earlier this year, I was told that I will not have a job next year. I am Title I funded, and with the budget shortfall, those funds are needed to be used elsewhere next year. This is heartbreaking to me, as I love my job and students, and I do not know what I will do. I know that we are in a horrible budget situation, and COVID has complicated everything. I'm pleading with you, though, not to lay off any more support staff. Our students have already lost valuable instruction time this year, and many will need remediation next year. Teachers and administrators alone cannot do this. They need the support staff to help. Please reconsider cutting more of the adults that our students rely on daily. Thank you for your time. This public comment was provided by Jennifer Monk. She's a third-grade teacher at Empire Elementary. I'm writing you out of concern for our students in Carson City. As we all know, there are budget cuts happening everywhere in every state. At this time, the proposed cuts are occurring from the bottom up. I have a couple of questions for those in charge. What is the purpose of a budget for schools? It is my understanding that money is given to schools to do what is best for students, to keep them with supplies, food, and a teacher. It is to keep them, it is to keep them with as, as much one-on-one instruction with the smallest class sizes possible. Mind you, we all need to understand that this is in a nutshell. Number two, how is cutting funds from the bottom up? Teachers supplies food or limiting those funds what is best for any student? Has there been considerations for any of the upper positions in the school district? Has there been any consideration for jobs that are not directly involved with students? Why are these being so vehemently protected when it is so negatively impacting students? Maybe before final decisions are made, there needs to be thought and reflection on what would you want for your child? What would you want for your grandchild, your grandchild? Wouldn't you want as much money to go to something that directly helps or, in this case, would hurt those children? The students do not get a vote on this. It is our jobs as the adults and decisions-makers to put ego aside, to put politics aside, and decide that the students are worth more than what they will be getting in this deal. That's the last, at this time, Mr. President of our public comment via email.
Raymond, do we have any additional comment?
Showing no additional comment online.
And I think I'll just, you know, I think listening to those public comments, you know, there's a lot of legitimate concerns raised, and the teacher in me is like, yes, yes, that's true. But then there's also the trustee in me that says, I'm elected by the people to make sure that we have an effective education system that's, you know, going to be able to sustain itself going forward. And I know I've had conversations with, you know, Mr. Stokes, and all of us are in agreement that with the money being there, we certainly support all of our employees. And, you know, I mean, our intention would be to get these people back to work and recall them if the funds are there. I think that we also have to be fair as employers and let people know with as much warning as possible that there is a likelihood of, you know, a reduction in force next year and allow people time to pursue other job opportunities if something's out there or something opens up in the school district that they might be able to transfer into. And I think that it's fair to give them the warning that this is a likely scenario. And, you know, I think that that's, that's kind of what we're trying to do. And so I just want people to know that we do support you. We understand what you're saying. We agree with what you're saying. We're making some hard decisions tonight. Stacy?
And I'd just like to add that this isn't something that staff just came up with, you know, two months ago. This was stuff that staff's been working on when I was president back in January 2019. This isn't something that any of us have taken lightly. I think AJ has gone through about 200 or 300 scenarios, along with other staff. I mean, they had charts and graphs, as AJ loves, but this isn't something we're not, like you said at the beginning of this meeting, we're not picking on a certain group. It's just the way to make the least impact, although it probably doesn't seem that way right now. But after looking at all the scenarios that the district has looked at, this actually has the least amount of impact on the children's learning. It doesn't seem like that, I know, because people don't think that we're in the classroom. But we do know that our staff and our board has looked at more than just this one scenario, and we've been looking at it for a long time because we knew this was coming. We've been very blessed to have an ending fund balance the way we have. And the last time we made hard cuts is when we got rid of the counselors in the elementary. That was the last time it was a really hard one where we weren't going to say we were going to absorb this. But as many board members have said, we can't keep doing that. And at one time, and we've been talking about this since last year, that we were going to have to be tough, and it was going to hurt. And it isn't easy. And if anybody out there, all of the parapros, if you don't think that we don't feel for you, you are so wrong. Because we can't imagine being in that kindergarten room without somebody helping us. But we have looked and looked and looked, and we have been trying to do this since, as far as I know, January 2019. And so I just want to say that it's not, it's not something that we're taking lightly. It's not something we decided yesterday or at the last meeting.
And I think it's not something, I have five kids that have gone through Carson City School Districts or still, are still in it. My oldest, who's a senior, was in kindergarten, and he had to, he had his own parapro in his class. It was half-day kindergarten. The next year, my son, who's a junior, budget cuts came because the Great Recession was coming before I was on the board, and they cut the position of each parapro in each kindergarten, and they, they shared a parapro. I had the next four boys that went through after the oldest in kindergarten had a shared parapro. Two of them had the full-day kindergarten. Two of them had the half-day. It's something that our district has done in the past when we've had to face these type of difficulties with, with, with reduced revenue. It's not ideal. It's certainly better if you can have a parapro in every kindergarten class. When we reached a financial point coming out of the Great Recession that we could put them back in, we did. And I guess the point I'm trying to say is, my four kids that had shared parapros, they're okay. And I know it's better for the kids if they can have it, but they're still going to be okay, even though it, it's hard to see that right now. And I, and I think that's something to remember, that there's lots of things we would like to do and, and that are better for the kids if we have the funding for it. And every time we have to cut, it, it's hard for all of us. So, though...
Joe?
No, I concur with what you're saying. You know, this has weighed heavily on me just personally as a board member. You know, I have a wife who has a parapro, and this in some, in some way or another will impact that paraprofessional. But I'm looking at it from a couple of vantage points. And, and one of them is, I hate to see somebody in the classroom go. I also know that in our district, in all I also know that in our district, in all districts, we have tremendous, in some respects, tremendous discipline problems. We have people outside the classroom who are tasked with helping with those discipline problems, that teachers really are, they have to be very careful, they have to tread very lightly on how they handle those disciplinary problems. And so, you know, we talked about coaches, and we, some of us learned that those positions are grant-funded, so that's not going to help us with budgets. We threw out arbitrarily vice principals, because that conversation came up with, I know, some of the emails we received, you know, why are we removing the people with very low salaries when we get a bigger bang at a higher one? You know, but the example of vice principals, and that's what kind of weighs in my decision, is they are tasked with disciplinary issues that are happening throughout our district and other districts. So, you know, there's a lot of support going on that impacts the students in a positive way, impacts the teachers. And while I'm, if these other people weren't there to help the teachers out, I'd be hard-pressed to vote for something like this. But it's a struggle. And, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, I looked at this from a couple of different angles and a couple of different positions that could or couldn't, you know, be considered. And while they were considered, you know, the decision as a whole several months ago was, we need to look at paraprofessional positions. And while it's a struggle to look that way, I'm struggling to find where else we can cut that isn't going to impact the classroom in one way or another. And I do appreciate all the emails and comments. For years, we've heard from people that, hey, I have a concern, and I'm afraid to bring it up. And I think if we wanted to put a positive spin on this, I'm so happy to hear people sending emails saying, please read my emails, because that was not the perceived, you know, realm we were living in a few years ago. And so, thank you, everybody, for emailing us, calling us, stopping us in the supermarkets, talking with Mr. Stokes. I know he gets people that comes to his office. I think it's important to hear from everybody, and we may not make a decision that satisfies what you want to see done as an individual, but everybody's opinion and input is important. And I just want to say thank you for that as well.
You know, Joe, just to kind of piggyback on that, I think also to thank the administrators who support their employees reaching out. Sometimes, it's an uncomfortable thing for a superintendent to have teachers and administrators and parents reaching out to board members, and as a principal to have your parapros and your teachers reaching out to board members. And so, I think that that shows that we're opening those lines of communication and supporting our employees to exercise their rights and to speak up. And so, I think our administrators need thanks for that also.
Agreed.
Any further conversation from the board?
I just have one quick thing. I think it's also important for the board members, if they do get correspondence from a staff member, to bring it up and commit to bringing it up if it's appropriate, like we did tonight, you know? And I think it's very appropriate. And just one other thing, we're not getting rid of all the paraprofessionals. There's still going to be shared paraprofessionals in some of these classrooms. Is that correct?
Correct. Each, the plan as of now is each elementary school will have four kindergartens, and between those four kindergartens, there'd be two kinder paraprofessionals.
A.J., sorry, I didn't want to belabor this. Do you mind? Hypothetically, we get more kindergarteners showing up, and one school needs five kindergarten classrooms. Do we have a, do we know how we're going to address that? Are we gonna, do we, does that force us to have to bring another paraprofessional on, or do we, I assume we would try to absorb that from within temporarily?
I, I... You want to take that one, boss?
I don't think those, I think those are one, those are part of the great unknown.
And if I might attempt, and certainly, certainly just to chime in here, I truly believe that while, while some staff members may have direct day-to-day impact on students, I'd like to think that all of us have impact on students in one way or another. If you think about the unbelievably high number of statutes that have been enacted over time, that have really been burdensome, in my opinion, on some of the expectations of educators that have essentially demanded that we have people in certain positions to help with curriculum, to help with record-keeping, to help with reporting, to help with accountability. I mean, there are all these requirements that do impact kids. And if those things are not going to go away, and maybe they will, I mean, maybe in our special session that we're all expecting, there might be some realization that there's more that we're asking educators to do than simply just be in front of kids and help them in all of the growth requirements that they need. And it's in their best interest to have. So, you know, to try to answer your question, we've always tried to be sensitive to some staffing level, or some recipe, as it were. And the state has required that we have 25 to 1 in our kindergarten classes. And so, if we reach some point where we have 25 to 1, we're going to have to try to figure out how we do that. It's been said several times tonight that as we figure out how to reopen school, and even if the ratio goes to 30 to 1, but if you can only have 15 of those kids in your classroom at any one time because of social distancing, you know, we've changed how the classroom looks immediately. And so, there are so many things that are just unknown right now. And I know that other local governments and state agencies right now are trying to put, they're facing the same budgetary requirements that we are. They have to turn their budgets in by the same date. And so, this week and next week are, this, these meetings are going on all over the state. And I think our governor and superintendent of public education realizes that that's the case, and I'm expecting, quite honestly, to have information from our state leaders anytime because of these kinds of discussions. I don't believe that this will be the last budget hearing that we'll have this year for the fiscal year 2021. So, you know, having said that, I'll just say that we've always tried to have some staffing ratio that we have applied based on student-to-teacher ratios.
And I appreciate that, Richard. Thank you. I know that's, you know, it's tough to speculate at this point, so thank you to both of you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Feweling, for your hard work on the budget, and your continued hard work, because we know going forward we'll be revisiting this. The next item on the agenda is approval for the consent agenda. This is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. We have a motion by Joe, second by Laurel. Any discussion by the board? Any public comment? No. Raymond, any public comment?
Seeing no public comment online.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is informational items. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stokes or your staff about instructional items? Discussional?
[inaudible].
That is. Item number 13, requests for future agenda topics. Joe?
I'm not in a rush for this, but, you know, we were talking about it again tonight with the breakfast in the classroom for these students. And at some point, whenever you think it's best and we have data on it, I don't know if we're tracking that kind of data, but we talk about the benefit of feeding these kids because it helps them learn. But is that, you know, do we, can we quantify that? I know some people have asked me, are we truly seeing a benefit, or is it perceived? And I have my personal opinion, and I think there's a benefit, but it'd be nice to have something we could use for support on that.
Yeah, we definitely have that information. That would be, you know, if you would like, we could even do a presentation over the summer of kind of a historical look, or we could wait until the school year starts and kind of see, you know, once we start getting some numbers in, and then we can kind of take a look so you can see what the difference has been, and either is totally fine, and Mr. Rocker and Mr. Stokes probably will go at the time.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I'm flexible, however you guys think it's best to present.
Any other future agenda items? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 10 o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
Good job.
[music]